Okay, thank you. Good evening. The May 16, 2017 Altadena Town Council meeting is hereby called to order. The time is 7:07. For the pledge of allegiance, I would like to ask Councilmember Sutherland to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you so much. Okay, we have a crowded agenda for tonight, so I will try my best to move it forward as fast as possible. Okay, roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Council, please acknowledge your presence when your name is called. Ann Combe?
Here.
Dean Cooper?
Here.
Nestor Delatorre?
Present.
Okori Izimi?
Present.
Damon Hobbie?
I'm present.
Ann Lancing?
Here.
Jennifer Lee?
Here.
Billy Malone?
Present.
Diane Marcusson?
Here.
Judy Matthews, yes, I'm here. Brent Muesen?
Present.
Justin Robertson?
Here.
Gloria Sanz Yika?
Here.
Patricia Sutherland?
Here.
Sylvia Vega?
She's excused.
Excuse, okay. John White?
Here.
Okay, we have one excused absent and a quorum at 15.
Thank you so much, and we'll proceed to the approval of the May 16, 2017 meeting agenda. I will turn that over to the Vice Chair.
Good evening to the community. Good evening, council members. Council members, have you had an opportunity to look at the agenda for May 16, 2017? Everybody had an opportunity to do that? Great. Are there any changes that anybody would like to make to that?
Yeah, well, I'd want to make sure that under the Alti Dina Community Standards District update, that's where I'm going to be making a short report on fences and hedges if there is public comment for that. I think, Okori, I talked to you about that, making sure that there was public comment for both of the items.
Okay.
I don't know if you have public comment cards for that, but yeah.
Okay, we will be happy to add public comments under the community standard district update by Councilmember Diane Marcusson, so there's no numbering, but just public comments below that.
Any other changes or suggestions?
Just one moment. I did receive an email from Jennifer, would you still like to speak or are you okay? You still want to be added?
For today, yes.
Okay, all right, so there will be a 7.3, and that will be Census Track 4612. Okay, back to you, Vice Chair.
Any other changes, other than the ones that were proposed? With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda for May 16, 2017 as amended. So, move.
Okay, you've heard the motion to accept the agenda for the May 16, 2017 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Any abstention? Okay, the agenda is approved. The chairman's report for today, because of the crowded agenda, I don't have much to report. I just, other than to say to the community, we appreciate you coming, we appreciate having a full house, and we would like to see it full like this every month. We do covet your input on how your community is governed. It is important. The 16 of us will be inadequate to carry the 40, 50,000 people in Altadena, so we need you to come in. Your input is definitely needed. Okay, turn it over to the Vice Chairman, Damon Hobbie.
Yes, good evening to the community again, and thank you all for coming out. We appreciate you all supporting the Altadena Town Council. The executive committee, which is comprised of myself, Ms. Patricia Sutherland, Mr. Billy Malone, Mr. Okori Izimi, and Ms. Judy Matthews, we meet on the second Tuesday of every month to formalize the agenda that you have set before you. If you would like to be considered to be put on the agenda, please contact one of us by email on the Monday before the Tuesday, so that we can consider whether or not it's an appropriate subject to put on the agenda. Additionally, there's comment cards in the back. If anybody wants to make a public comment on any of the items, or at the end of the meeting, please fill out a comment card and present that comment card to one of the council members, and we will call you at the appropriate time. Lastly, council members, the community needs to have updated information to be able to contact you if needed, so if you have a change in your email address or in your phone numbers, please give that to our corresponding secretary, Mr. Billy Malone, so that those changes can be made. With that in mind, that's my report.
Thank you so much. Then moving on to the recording secretary's report, before we do that, I would like to let, because there's a lot of people in the audience, and there should be a stack of chairs, so instead of standing, if you'd like to have a seat, I think there's a stack of chairs to my right, and you are welcome to get that and have a seat. Okay, moving on to the recording secretary's report, Councilmember Judy Matthews.
Thank you, Councilman. Council, you were provided the draft minutes of April 18, 2017, with the response date of Monday, May 15, 2017, for any comments. I received a comment from Dean Cooper that he reported absent, which was confirmed, and Justin Robinson to correct the following three typos. Item 2, Molino, M-O-L-I-N-O. Item 5.1.1, Marcusson. Item 5.1.1. Were you saying something? Oh, okay. I'm not going to pronounce this, I'm going to spell it. V-E-N-E-Z-I-A. And that's under the 5.1.1. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes?
I had sent you an email late today, and I believe the meeting was until 10:18. I don't believe it was 9:18 last time.
I think you were right.
So, that's at the end of the...
That is correct. Okay. How did I miss that, Damon?
(inaudible).
Oh, okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I moved that the April 18, 2017 meeting minutes are accepted as amended.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining?
Abstain.
Any, anyone, any no votes? Okay, so there are two abstentions for those that were not here at the meeting.
I apologize, I forgot I have to abstain.
Okay, so we have three abstentions. Okay, thank you so much, and moving on to item 2.4, that will be treasurer's report. Councilmember Sutherland.
Thank you. The balance in our account as of the end of April is $2,317.89. The slight increase from the month before was due to the donations at the March and April meetings, and I think that's all the information I need to give you on the bank reconciliation. And I will mention, as I do at every meeting, that we are not financed by anybody else but donations, so at every meeting, we will pass the can around, and we appreciate your assistance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we're doing well. Let's move on to the public safety, oh, I'm sorry. The correspondent secretary's report, Councilmember Billy Malone.
In light of the fact that we have a full program, I don't have much to report at this time, but I will say, I want to say thank you to those who showed up today for the ribbon cutting at the Altadena Elementary School. Several of us had to run over there, and you too, Justin, before we came to the meeting, so congratulations on the new opening as well.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the item number three, and we start with 3.1, which will be the California Highway Patrol and Officer Mike Yoah.
He's two for two. Good evening, everybody. Officer Mike with the Altadena CHP Office. As I know everybody travels the freeways along with the surface streets in Altadena, I just wanted to quickly read the latest news release from Caltrans, and this is in conjunction with the construction that's going on, on the 210 freeway. And it reads, "Beginning the week of May 14, the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, will be making temporary lane changes along the westbound Foothill Freeway from east of Mountain Street to Ocean View Boulevard." And this is in their efforts to replace the lanes that have eroded from all the traffic over the years. And 55 miles per hour is the maximum speed limit in those zones. And then more specifically, Altadena. We have the comparison information this month, I didn't have it last month, but traffic collisions for the month of April, there were 25. 15 were property damage only. Of those traffic collisions, nine people were injured in those traffic collisions in which people were transported to area hospitals. None of the injuries were major. Four of them involved hit-and-run, being a vehicle versus a parked vehicle, and then one vehicle into a tree, where the motorist, the driver, then fled the scene, and no arrest was made. During the month of April, our officers made two DUI arrests. They were not related to any traffic collisions or anything like that, and then there was one other unrelated warrant arrest. On the enforcement side of things, with, like myself, patrolling the area, there were 65 citations issued, and they ranged in violations of excessive speed and stop sign violations. And following in suit with April 2016, there were no fatalities. How does that compare to 2016? We had a little bit of a reduction in traffic collisions. Last year this time, we had 29. 22 were property damage only. There were six injuries, but during that month, we had one major injury. And then there was one DUI-related traffic collision. And then on the enforcement side of things with patrol, there was only 11 citations issued. So, a little bit of an increase in activity this past month, and with the step-up patrol that we have been conducting in the area. And that is all I have.
Thank you so much. Any questions from any member of the council?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. Hi, Officer Mike. Can I request that you start letting us know if any of the collisions you report on involve bikes or pedestrians?
I went one by one for all of the traffic collisions that were generated for the month of April of this year, and none of them, for the month of April, involved a pedestrian or a bicyclist.
If one did in the future, would that be a regular, would you flag that and let us know, or should we make that request of you?
Well, the way that I've been looking up this information, I pull up each individual traffic collision on the computer, and I review it to let you know whether or not it's a serious violation, whether it involved a major injury, a DUI-related type event, or obviously a fatality. But yes, certainly, I can flag pedestrian and bicycle-related traffic collisions as well.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, there's a question from Councilmember Marcusson.
Hi. I understand that there have been some complaints about the traffic at the Waldorf School on Mariposa that has been, where parents have been parking where they shouldn't, or stopping places to drop children off. Is that something that you can help us with?
It is. I actually spoke to a resident that lives on Scripps, and she had related many of the issues that her and the residents in that particular area are dealing with. Scripps is a very narrow street, and so when motorists go up that street and try and attempt a U-turn when you have vehicles parked on either side of the roadway, a three-point turn ends up becoming like a nine or 10-point turn, because it's so narrow. But I did tell that resident that I would be in the area tomorrow morning to try and address some of those concerns.
Okay, thanks.
And I will make it a regular stop for me.
Put it on your rotation?
One of the many rotations, yeah. I'll be out there.
Thanks very much.
Okay, Councilmember White?
Yes. What is the status of the speed limit trailer that you deploy on occasions?
Well, we have three radar trailers. One is currently being serviced. It's broken. It was vandalized. They commonly get vandalized, you know, because they sit out, you know, and then they get weathered and wear and tear. We recently took possession of a brand-new radar trailer. My issues with that radar trailer is it's huge. It's as wide as a car, and it's very tall once you extend the solar capabilities for the charging the batteries. So I think that I'm going to have to be very selective in where I can actually deploy that radar trailer. Currently, I have one in, on Tennoble, just south of Altadena Drive, and just south of Homewood. That, again, was put in place for some complaints that I was getting in and around that area. But that's the older, smaller trailer, so I'll try and get that one in the tighter areas of the community.
I'd like to put in a request, and maybe I'll do that offline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those are the questions from the council members, and we thank you so much for your presentation.
Okay.
3.2, Altadena Sheriff's Station, Lieutenant Octave.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Altadena Town Council, and members of the Altadena community. Lieutenant Mike Octave from Altadena Station, under direction of Captain Vicki Stuckey. Our crime stats, we've had a decrease in overall crime, I'm happy to say, for the month of April as compared to March. We've had a decrease of a total from 67, 66 to 47. This is mainly due to an overall decrease in vehicle burglaries, which went from 18 to 3. I directly attribute this to not only law enforcement efforts, but to the members of the community, so we thank you so much for your help, and I want to reiterate the message, when you see something, please say something, because that's the biggest deterrent of all your criminals. Census Track, can everyone hear me? Census Track 4601, we had a decrease in overall crime, and that went from 14 to 10. That was due to an overall decrease in residential burglaries, which is, they've been on a rise as of late, but there has been a decrease, and again, this is a result of all of our efforts working together. Vehicle burglaries also decreased from 6 to 2. Census Track 4602 remained the same at 5, but there was a slight increase in residential burglaries. The deputies are aware of that, and we will take necessary precautions to decrease those individual crimes. We did have a grand theft from an unlocked vehicle, so again, make sure, try your best to secure your vehicle whenever you're leaving it. Please try to make sure the windows are rolled up, try to make sure that vehicle is secure. Okay, Census Track 4603.1, it dropped in overall crime. It went from 4 to 3, and there has been a decrease in thefts, and that went from 3 to 1. Census Track 4603.2, it increased slightly from 5 to 6 crimes, and this was due to a slight increase in the residential burglaries, and the larcenies also went up. Some of those were shoplifting incidents, but we did make some arrests pursuant to those specific crimes. Census Track 4610, there was a decrease from 12 to 10, and the notable area was in the area of robberies. We had a couple robberies in the month of March. We had none this month, and there's also, there were also zero residential burglaries, so that's great news to report. Census Track 4611, the overall decrease was from 7 to 5, and this decrease was due to a decrease in vehicle burglaries. And also a decrease in burglary other structures. When we say burglary other structures, we're talking about detached garages. Census Track 4612, we had a decrease from 7 to 4. This was mainly due to a decrease in residential burglaries, which went from 2 to 1, and also a decrease in burglary other structures. Census Track 4613, there was a decrease from 9 to 5, and this was mainly due to a decrease also in burglary other structures. And overall, our larceny theft drop, our residential burglaries remain the same at 1, but we do feel that they are trending down. Are there any questions?
Okay, you've heard the report from the Altadena Sheriff's Station. Any questions from the council members? Okay, I'll get that. Councilmember Mossen?
So, in 4610, on Lincoln and Fig at the liquor store, we've seen an awful lot of increase in people standing around and so forth. I don't see anything showing up in the crime report, but is there a way for us to increase the patrols and, you know, do something about that? What should we do if we see people just kind of loitering there, and loitering in the back of the liquor store and so forth?
Absolutely, and when you, we do encourage everyone, when you see suspicious activity or people loitering unnecessarily, please do not hesitate to call the station. Myself and my partner, Operation Lieutenant Juliana Clay, we drive that area frequently, and we are looking for those specific type issues. So when we see that, and we see that type of trend, we make sure we get that information out to the members of the department, and then they do the directed patrols. But I do encourage you to call the station, and we will send a unit out.
So, previously, what we ended up doing was putting up, having the owner put up no loitering signs on the side of the building and so forth. Is there anything proactive that we can do that can address that problem?
Yeah, the owners can, and I'm not sure of the 602, the trespassing signs are posted outside, but we can reach out to the owners, or you can do it, and just let them know they would like to file for a 602 letter, which we, that actually allows us to make an arrest in the event that we have repeat offenders in terms of loitering. Now, unfortunately, without that ordinance just being there in itself, unless they're asked to leave, is not a crime, because we make that arrest, and then we may get a call saying, "You're harassing individuals for no reason."
Sure.
So we need to, again, just work together on that issue.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, member. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Octave. This question really is a continuation of communication that we have with our youth, our young Americans, and that kind of thing. It has to do with being pulled over. And I guess the question that I want to ask you is, is there any particular policy or direction that you guys are given in terms of pulling over certain ethnicity groups, and the question that you're asking them? For example, are you on probation, or are you, are you, yeah, excuse me, are you on probation or are you on parole?
Okay.
And we've gotten a couple concerns about those types of questioning, and this is a continuation of those types of things that we had during the October meeting with Noah.
And that's a great question to lead in after this previous question. If these are youths, say, loitering outside the market there at Figueroa and Lincoln, we're not going to walk up to them based on race, so our policy has nothing to do with race. If there's a violation that's noted, then that officer is encouraged to be proactive and make sure they contact that individual. Ask them whether or not they're on probation or parole, the question can be asked, and that officer does that based on his level of comfortability and based on, for officer's safety reasons. If you stop an individual, he's on parole, you kind of have a, you want to make sure that you take all the necessary precautions. That means just making sure you're extra cautious, you can do that. But again, we do not, we don't target people or anything along those lines. We always encourage our officers, and we know that if they're going to contact someone, they have to first, they have to make sure they log that contact, and again, there's got to be a reason for it.
And I guess to make sure that I'm being clear in the question, is that a question that's asked of all ethnicities or just certain ethnicities?
Each individual, each individual situation is different, so it really depends on that officer's level of comfortability. Is it against policy to ask that question? Absolutely not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you so much, and I believe that's all the questions from council. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you, sir.
All right. The next one is the CERT. I'm not sure if he's here. Oh, okay, someone from CERT, and you are definitely not Deputy Dan Page, so please state your name.
No, we're not Deputy Page, but when he texts, we respond, right? So here we are. My name is Nancy Darling, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about CERT, but you know, this is an amateur radio, so anybody who's interested, of course, we think that's great. I'll leave a card at the back of the room, and you can get information. Our primary purpose in being here is to encourage you to become CERT-trained Community Emergency Response Team, and the focus of Community Emergency Response is about you. Okay, it's not about the Sheriff Department, or the Red Cross, or any of those other services that we'd normally call when we had an emergency. When a disaster happens, you are the first responder. Okay? So I'm pausing for that, so that you put it right here, and then you go home and you get prepared. Okay, so a lot of what happens in CERT, which Deb will go through, all of the nine modules and the training for that, is not just for an earthquake. It can be for, you know, 2011, when we all had, didn't have electricity for, it's like a fish story, 10 days, 12 days, whatever it was, we were without electricity and power for that period of time. We had to rely on ourselves and our neighbors to take care of each other. So it's up to us to make sure that we have food, water, first aid, and shelter. No one's going to come to us. So CERT training helps you become proficient, it helps you be confident, and it helps you know what to do. Because when you aren't prepared, you're taking panic, and you're putting it right outside that door, not near you, and then you say, "Oh, man, I get to use all this stuff, you know, I'm prepared. Now I can break that open and learn to put up the tent, which I've never practiced before." Okay? So there's different, you know, it is up to us. CERT is a free training, and you get like this awesome booklet, which is good, because it covers a lot of information, so you can use it in your home, and you can use it with your family. Okay, so I'm not sure we have a time limit, but you have a big agenda, so I'm going to go home, and I'm going to get on the radio, because I have a net tonight, okay? So, thank you, Deb, and thank you, Town Council.
Thank you so much.
And I'm Deb Halberstadt. I have a little group of handouts that we've been handing out. Don't bother about the back, I often do it on recycled paper. But this is some of the handouts we've been having at CERT meetings lately. And we're working on disaster preparedness, fire safety, disaster medical operations, like triage, for instance, light search and rescue, team organization, disaster psychology, and terrorism. We do all that, we really do. We have a monthly meeting here, second Tuesday of every month. If anyone would like to come, I'd love to have you. We'd love to have you from the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. Any questions?
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Any questions from council?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Councilmember Sanz Yika.
I wanted to know, you know, when you get the three-day survival foods?
Yes.
And it says it has a five-year shelf life?
Yes.
Even though it's five years, does that mean that it's just, after the five years, it's just no good to use, or just that the nutritional value is half of what it was when you purchased it? If there's water in there, could you still use that water after five years?
With all food, you should always be careful about the expiration date. That's just generally true. So I would swap it. just generally true. So I would swap it out. I would swap it out. Same thing with water. Same is true. If it hasn't been sealed properly, or if it hasn't been chlorinated properly, then you might have a problem. So you don't want to drink or eat anything that would make you sick on top of an earthquake or whatever disaster we're facing. That would be bad. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate the report. And moving on to the Map Your Neighborhood, I believe it's Eric Van De Veldy. Okay?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak for the council tonight. I represent Map Your Neighborhood. We have some flyers on the back piano here. Please grab one. Map Your Neighborhood, once again dovetailing with CERT. We work hand-in-hand with CERT. It's a disaster preparedness, and any disaster can happen at any time. So we would like, you know, as individuals and as a community, to be prepared for these disasters. And Map Your Neighborhood is a great way to do that. What I'd like to say also is that these trainings that we do are free, just like CERT. And we have a training this Sunday night, Sunday afternoon, at Altadena Town and Country Club at 4:00. So please consider coming. We've got other, other trains planned for July 17th, and then also September 27th. So please, if you're interested, grab a flyer. There's an RSVP email that you can RSVP, or last minute, please, just come on over to Altadena Town and Country Club. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Do you have a list of neighborhoods that have been mapped?
Yes.
Can you get to the mic, please, so that they can?
I just wanted to know if there was a list of neighborhoods that were mapped, and you responded?
Yes, there is. There is actually a list. It's, it's something, obviously, that we just keep to ourselves. Nobody actually asked for it, but if you're actually interested, we can, you know, we can share that with you. Our goal is to, our three-year goal is to have 10% of the households in Altadena prepared. And right now, we're about halfway through that period, and we're about 4.5% of that. So we're actually doing pretty well. And, but just know that something's going to happen, you know, and you want to be prepared for that. And it's just a good feeling.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. All right, moving on to the county fire. And, okay, would that be? We have a different person.
Yes, that have other commitments tonight. Mark Whaling, I'm the new battalion chief here in Battalion Four, and glad to be here. Glad to answer any questions if you don't get them during here. During the covered period of April, we had approximately 260 times we went out and helped people with emergency medical situations, and we had four major fires during that time. There was about 40 other additional calls, false alarms, and various electrical problems and stuff. Your fire department continues to serve you every day. I could take some questions if you'd like.
Wow, that was good. We like that. Can you spell your name? You say Smark?
Yeah, Mark, M-A-R-K, W-H-A-L-I-N-G.
Any questions from council? Wonderful. Thank you so much, and welcome. Okay, here we go. Special presentation, a Royal Seiko Weekend Updates. And I'll turn it over to, okay, councilmember Judy Matthews.
Yes, and I have just a brief file.
To the mic, please.
Okay. Darryl Dunn currently serves as the CEO and General Manager for the Rose Bowl Operating Company in Pasadena, California. He has held this position since 1999. He is responsible for managing all aspects of the facility, including contract negotiations with prospective events, ongoing relationships with existing tenants, Tournament of Roses, and UCLA, all financial marketing operational needs for the stadium, and loan term strategic planning, as well as community relations. In addition, he also serves as a primary representative of the City of Pasadena to American Golf Corporation. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me, inviting me this evening. So, you know, what happened was, Councilmember Matthews went to a meeting that the Rose Bowl hosted concerning a music and arts festival that we're having on June 24th and 25th. And she was kind enough to invite me, because she thought that you folks here may be interested in knowing about it and other Rose Bowl activities. First of all, I would like to introduce Joel Bryant, who's a member of the Rose Bowl Operating Company Board of Directors. He came with me this evening in the event that there are any questions that he may be able to help me with. So Royal Seiko Weekend, what that is, it's on June 24th and 25th. So it's a two-day event, and it's going to occur on Brookside Golf Course. What happened was, you know, the Rose Bowl, we turn, we're 95 years old, so we're just trying to develop a business plan so we could be sustainable in the future. And although we do have UCLA and the Tournament of Roses, we, economically, we need another stable, you know, revenue-generating event or tenant, if you would, to try to, you know, sort of make ends meet, enable us to reinvest into our future. We do believe that in a few years from now, when the stadium in Inglewood is built, typically what happens, when an NFL stadium, and it's going to be $2.5 billion, that stadium comes into a market, you know, everybody goes after the same events. Like this weekend, we would have U2, and they would go after U2, and be harder to get those kind of things. So we believe there's going to be a drop-off of our number of events when the new stadium comes in. So we felt it was very important to develop a long-term contractual relationship with a new entity. And we were able to work with a group called Andrews Entertainment Group, the same folks who own Staples Center and the LA Kings and the Galaxy and so forth, to develop a music and arts festival. They're very experienced at it. They're very noted for doing things out in the desert. Desert Trip was an event they did last fall. They do Coachella every year, and they also do an event called Stagecoach, as well as a New Orleans Jazz Festival. They do events in London. You know, they're one of the largest entertainment companies in the world. So what we did is, we looked for it, and we told them, for our area, we're looking for a little older demographics, and they thought there was a market for it. So the festival that we're going to have, the headliners, if you would, are Tom Petty, Mumford &amp; Sons, and Alabama Shakes, and several others. There's going to be three stages. One of them is going to be primarily jazz-related. The other two will be just more contemporary music. There's also going to be a very heavy focus on food. You know, I'm not much of a foodie, but like Union, Doghouse, and a lot of restaurants and so forth will be present there, which is part of the festival, as well as an arts component. And they're going to have a very heavy emphasis on children's activities. They're partnering with KidSpace. They think all kids under 10 are free. They're going to have a kid's stage, and they're going to learn how to make instruments. So the idea to be sort of multi-generational, you know, something to grow, something people will want to take their children to. You know, this year, being the first year, I think the event promoter, and we feel the same way, felt it's best to try to grow it a little small. I mean, obviously, when we have events, sometimes they're massive events. You know, this weekend, we have U2, two nights, and both are sold out. And to be honest with you, we can have two Rose Bowls and sell them out this weekend. But in this event, purposefully, they're trying to keep the attendance down. We anticipate about 30,000 people a day. Typically, for a UCLA game, the smallest crowd, I think we had last year, was like 45,000. So we don't anticipate a lot of traffic impacts for the area. You know, the noise always, of course, comes with music events. It's going to be interesting how it works on the golf course, because we've never had musical events like this on the golf course before. Usually, when you're in the Rose Bowl, one of the challenges are, you need the music to go. So if you're seated in the last row, in the top, you have to hear it clearly. So the speakers are aimed upward to you. You know, so it goes in, and quite often, of course, the music spills over, and that's when, you know, neighborhoods hear it. And the music festival, it's on the golf course, so actually, the speakers are going to be going down towards the people, because you don't have people up. But sometimes, sound travels in mysterious ways, so we're not sure exactly how it's going to work. You know, any one specific stage will not be as loud as, say, U2 this weekend, just because you have the stages sort of near each other, and you can't totally drown out the other one. But it is something, I think, that we're looking forward to, and it's going to evolve and grow. But like I said, we don't think this year is going to be a crazy year in terms of an impact side. You know, the idea is, we learn from it. It's a long-term agreement. It's a 10-year agreement with options. We could bring it up to 20 years, hopefully. And we realize that how it impacts the communities can be very important, as does our partner, AEG. So they also want to grow it small, you know, understand it. You know, there's going to be a few bumps in the road. That's what happens with that event. And hopefully, they're not going to, so then we can correct them. And as it gets bigger, we hope the event will be able to be something that the community embraces and enjoys. So that's about the Royal Seiko Weekend. Of course, we, our year really starts this weekend as a whole. As I mentioned, U2 is a big deal. There's two nights. You all, people, you know, the Rose Bowl's had a lot of councils before, and U2's been here before. So that will occur then in June, of course, with the music festival. In July, we have our traditional July 4th event. We have 91st Annual. And then we have, late July, we get busy with the soccer match and two one-day concerts. Metallica one weekend and Justin Bieber another. Then we have a break for a little bit. And who, Metallica fans here, I take it, huh? Right. And then we have UCLA football season sprinkled in there. We have two more concerts, Green Day and Coldplay separately. So it's a busy year. We have a total of 17 big events. You know, last year, we had 16. The year before, we had 18. Like I said, we anticipate, you know, next year will probably be a significant year, too, and then we think there's going to be a drop-off. So hopefully, that information is helpful to you, all of you. Are there, may I answer any questions?
Okay, I think a few people. So let me start with Councilmember Robertson, and then we get to Councilmember Sanyika. Okay, well, let's do Councilmember Sanyika. Ladies first.
I just wanted to know what the cost of this event will be, and will you have a senior citizen discount?
Well, we'll talk inside after. The, for the music festival, the prices range, because it's a two-day event. One day, it goes from $125 up to, I think, $399. The VIP portions of the event are sold out. But as I said, you know, they're not, you know, the anticipation is to get about 30,000 a day for this, for this first year.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson?
Thanks for being here. So during the event, this being your first time doing this sort of thing in this part of the property, during the event, who is the community's contact? Who can a resident, who can a council member, anyone get in touch with for any reason?
Well, we have, we have a community hotline, actually, for all of our events. And what we do is, we'll have, and I'm going to have some flyers I'll put in the back afterwards. But it's a phone number that is answered. You know, we have a command post. We have police and fire and security and parking and traffic. And right in that room, there's a, it's a hotline, it's a phone, and it's just really for community members. That number's 626-397-4141. And then people call in, and then we track it, and we try to address what the concern is, and try to address it as quickly as we can.
Thanks.
Okay, any, okay.
I have a selfish question, because I have tickets to the event.
To the mic, please.
Is there a site map that's available yet on the website?
You know what? This week, our website's all U2. But I'm going to give you my card, and then come Monday.
I work for the city. I'll shoot you the email.
Okay, shoot me the email. Perfect. We will have the information for you.
Any more questions from council? Okay. On this one, I know we have a crowded agenda, but I can, if there are a couple people from the audience, I would like to take a couple for the, any, okay. None. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming. All right, now to the committee reports. And let's start with land use, and that will be Councilmember Markison.
Yeah, so we have a couple of items. The first is an action item for Altadena Marketplace that the Altadena Town, I'm sorry, the Altadena Land Use Committee voted to approve this project with conditions. I wanted to take a minute to thank Ann Coleman and John White for doing such a really great job, working through possible conditions, working with the county, working with the residents. I personally have not seen a project with this many conditions proposed that you'll see tonight and will vote on tonight. But I know that they've done everything, working with the county, to try to accommodate as many people as they can with this project. So I'm going to turn it over to Ann to go ahead and go through the process so we can vote on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Markison. Before I begin, could I, I'd like to remind or let people know who came in late, that if they want to make a public comment on this item or other items on the agenda, to please pick up and fill out a comment card. And the comment cards are on the piano. So this is a CUP, a Conditional Use Permit Application, number 2016004021, of Altadena Marketplace at 2450 Lake Avenue in Altadena. It's a conditional use permit, or an application for such, to allow the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption for four restaurants, the sale of a full line of alcohol for onsite consumption for two restaurants, and the sale of a full line of alcohol for offsite consumption for a small retail market in conjunction with a new marketplace composed of six restaurant, six restaurant tenant spaces and one market tenant space, with associated live entertainment limited to a small ensemble providing background music, subject to conditions of approval. So John and I have solicited input from the community on this project. We've used social media, emails. We've collected, we've recorded public comment at LUC meetings. Social media shows widespread interest and support for the marketplace project. I haven't tabulated it. I gave up on that in February. But generally, there's widespread support. What I have been collecting are the emails and counting them. And councilmembers, I've shared a document that has all the emails, a summary of the social media feedback, summary of sensitive use feedback, and other background information on this project. So John White, Diane Markison, Justin Robinson, and I have received emails in support and in opposition to the project. Since February 7th, we've received 23 emails. Councilmembers, I didn't send you the last one that came in after 4:00 p.m. today. We've received 23 emails in support. Before February 5th, there were five. So that's 28 total emails in support. And we've received, oh, a few of these emails have suggested hours and other policies that they would like or are okay with. Supporters cite the need for more restaurants in Altadena and for more economic activity on Lake Avenue. Those who mentioned it suggested or were okay with closing hours of 10:00 p.m., 11:00 p.m., or 12:00 a.m. I should say that the developers initially requested hours of 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 or 2:00 a.m. In public comment at the LUC meetings, supporters spoke in favor of closing hours at 10:00 or 11:00, and how Altadena could use a nice centralized business area, and how a successful marketplace could raise property values. Furthermore, the marketplace developers put out a petition online and received over 360 signatures in support, 365 signatures in support, and over 300 of those are Altadena residents. Now, as far as opposition goes, there are, we got, we received emails or letters of opposition from 14 households. And 12 of the households are house- are, are house, are people who live on Mariposa or Marchetta, just east of Lake Avenue, and less than a block from Lake Avenue. These residents signed a form, a form letter expressing concern over parking issues, seating capacity, the number of liquor licenses, and the hours of operation at the above address. Not all of these residents are firmly opposed to the project. For example, one spoke during public comment in general support, but citing concerns for parking and headlights into his home. Another of these residents wrote an email in support before he signed the form letter citing concerns. His email was generally in support, but cited parking concerns, and one at hours no later than 10:00 or 11:00 PM. The 13th email in opposition spoke mostly to the unreliability of the developer and the developer's lack of transparency. And there was a 14th email from a, a tenant, a tenant who has signed up and, and who was dissatisfied with the slow pace of the development. Several of the people who sent emails in support or opposition or signed letters, expressed concerning concern made comments at LUC meetings. But other people as well showed up at the land use committee meetings. And those, those included three additional households in support, plus two additional in support with reservations, and five additional households in opposition. There are a few neighbors on, 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 who live on Mariposa and Marchetta who are opposed to the development in particular. These are strong, strongly opposed. And their issues have to do mostly with potential impact that circa 200 patrons of Marketplace would have on the neighborhood. They fear that the overflow from Marketplace parking lot would take up the last few available parking spaces on Mariposa and Phil Marchetta as well. Furthermore, three of these people live on Mariposa and have complained about the behaviors of the proprietors of a bar down the street and their patrons. They fear that Marketplace and their patrons will be acting in the same way and exacerbating the nuisance in their neighborhood. Thus, they want early closing hours, no live music, valet parking, no patron or tenant parking on Mariposa or Marchetta, just east of Lake Avenue, and only one restaurant alcohol license. So I would like to, among the emails we've received, there were at least two were, who, were from people who, who were out of town and could not make public comment this evening. And so I'd like to read excerpts from those emails, and I won't take too much time. From Meredith, who lives on Lake Avenue, "Michael and I have owned Webster's Community Pharmacy for seven years. For nearly four years now, the south end of the building has stood empty. This places great challenges on our businesses, as these are absolutely, there is absolutely no other traffic, traffic building locations adjacent to our two stores. We have daily conversations with our customers, and the main request is always the same, restaurants and upscale dining options, dining options. The marketplace promises to deliver on all of these necessities, and we can't agree more. If this town continues to complain and question every growth opportunity that comes along, it will soon be a place that businesses won't want to bother investing in. We all share the Webster's parking lot, and when the development gets underway, the plans for the parking will solve many issues that are of concern. There will be security and proper lighting. Neither exists now. As for the liquor licenses, it's a necessity these days for food service establishments to have alcohol licensing in order to be successful and profitable. As each of the marketplace vendors will own their own business, they must have their own license. The bottom line is this, the Altadena Town Council must approve the permitting of this project." Then from, from Jen, who is in Europe at the moment, "We have been to many similar food halls all around the country and in Europe, and always find them to be wonderful gathering places for the community. The marketplace would also be a great showplace for many different cuisines and purveyors, and hopefully create opportunities for new small businesses in our neighborhood. We actually visited a food hall in Amsterdam last night in a converted train station that was full of diverse people and food, and was a great way to get a taste of the city. While there were many, if, if not most stalls serving alcohol, it was not at all out of control or too loud. These places always maintain a family-friendly atmosphere while still offering beer and wine and cocktails, and I'm sure our marketplace would do the Here's another one. "We like the idea of having food court-type options available locally for dining. We are also in favor of supporting local artists and think it would be helpful to have a spot locally to showcase their work." Here's another one from Mindy. "I just wanted to mention, as I cannot make the meeting, that based on what I heard over and over again in the community conversations at the town hall, and my own personal experience as a resident of Altadena, I strongly support the sale of alcoholic beverages at the marketplace, anything we can do to ensure the success of the project. People are desperate in Altadena for a walkable commercial area that offers a variety of shopping and dining experiences." Now, I'd like to read from the opposition, people who have serious concerns, from Mariposa and Marchetta residents. "We have, we have attended two of the last land use committee meetings and have become very concerned with the following: six liquor licenses, this number does not include the liquor store, hours of operation beyond the standard restaurant closing time, lack of adequate onsite parking for employees and 200 customers, live music." And then the letter that the 12 households signed, "As a neighbor, I am concerned regarding the parking issues, seating capacity, number of liquor licenses, and the hours of operation at the above address. As a resident of the surrounding neighborhood, residential neighborhood, I believe this will have a negative impact on our community." And another comment, "This part of Altadena cannot accommodate six restaurants with 200 patrons and 20 to 30 proprietors and employees. We don't have the infrastructure, not enough parking, no public parking lots. Can LUC do something to reduce the number of patrons in Marketplace?" Okay, so with that, I will go to reading the conditions. These are the conditions that were approved of unanimously by the, by the land use committee, and were developed by John and me with the, with the idea of trying to meet the wishes and needs of as many residents as possible, and also to, to, to not be so restrictive as to prevent the business from succeeding. So the permit, the permit is to be granted with the understanding that it will be used only for multiple small tenants, in keeping with the developer's marketplace concept. Allow up to six tenants to apply for type 41 or type 47 licenses, with a maximum of two type 47 licenses, and allow one tenant to apply for a type 21 license. Type 47 license allowed only when necessary to complement a particular type of ethnic or specialty food, like Korean cocktails. Footprint of type 21 license establishment, that would be the market, shall be 500 square feet usable space. No private parties, events, single activity, use of facility. The permatee shall not install or maintain video games, pool tables, or similar game activities or equipment onsite. The sale of alcoholic beverages shall be in conjunction with food sales. Food service, along with full menu, shall be made available during all hours of business operation. Hours for selling alcoholic beverages, sale of alcoholic beverages may begin every day at 9:00 AM. Sales of alcoholic beverages shall end with closing time no later than 10:00 PM Sunday to Thursday, and no later than 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. Alcoholic beverages sold by vendor with type 21 license shall not be consumed at the site except for instructional tasting. There shall be no consumption of alcoholic beverages outside and in the vicinity of the marketplace building. Tenants shall not use styrofoam in the serving or selling of food and/or drink. Owners shall provide plumbing for dishwashers as needed by the tenants. Exterior security cameras shall be required. Burglary and robbery alarms shall be installed inside the food hall or marketplace. Each tenant will have contact information for the building manager. Contact information will also be on display in the building. Marketplace policy shall direct overflow parking to Lake Avenue, Mariposa west of Lake, and the prospective lot on El Molino next to the fire station, rather than to Mariposa Street, Marchetta Street, and Beverly Way east of Lake Avenue. Tenants and employees associated with Marketplace shall not park on Mariposa Street, Marchetta Street, or Beverly Way east of Lake Avenue. Parking lot striping and signage shall ensure that a delineated no parking towaway zone is provided for easement of residents at 9:40 East Mariposa Street. Developer and county are aware of easement, and parking plan addresses the issue with use of signage. The parking plan is a separate item from the CUP. Striping shall maximize the number of parking spaces in the lot. Parking lot lighting shall be dark sky compliant, direct, directed toward parking lot, and shall not illuminate adjacent private residences. In consideration of after-dark operating hours, a barrier shall be constructed or vegetation grown so as to shield Marchetta Street residents, residences across the street from the Marketplace parking lot from automobile, SUV, and truck headlights, especially the residences at 916, 930, and 936. Each March, East Marchetta Street shall be protected from such light intrusion. All efforts shall be made to provide noise reduction with the use of landscaping in the parking lot at entry, egress driveways, and along the east wall of the marketplace structure. Require rear doors to be self-closing. No amplification of live music. Live music not to exceed small ensembles, up to three, four musicians, providing unamplified background music for diners. There shall be no music or other noise audible beyond the restaurant premises with the doors open during business hours. Live music accompanying dining shall not extend beyond operating hours. No loitering. Signage shall be posted on Marketplace property to direct traffic exiting Marketplace parking lot toward Lake Avenue. And I need to address this point after I finish. The permatee shall not advertise the sale of alcoholic beverages on the exterior of any structure on the subject property, including windows, walls, fences, or similar structures. Signs advertising brands and types of alcoholic beverages or the availability of alcohol for sale at the subject sites shall not be visible from the exterior of the premises. The permatee shall maintain the subject property in a neat and orderly fashion. The permatee shall maintain free of litter all areas of the premises over which the permatee has control. The permatee and all managers and designated employees of the establishment who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages shall participate in the LEAD, licensee education on alcohol and drugs program provided by the State of California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control or any equivalent program. All new designated employees shall be required to attend. The licensee shall display a certificate or plaque in a publicly accessible area of the establishment, such as the lobby, indicating that they have participated in this program. Proof of completion of the facilities training program by employees, the licensee and all managers, shall be available upon request. All sellers of alcoholic beverages must, must be at least 21 years old. The permatee shall provide adequate lighting above the entrance of the premises. The lighting shall be of sufficient power to illuminate and make easily discernible the appearance and conduct of all persons entering or exiting the premises. Security cameras shall be installed inside the restaurant and outside facing the parking lot. Request, we request a five-year conditional use permit so that hours and parking burden can be reviewed at that time. The CUP renewal application shall come before the Altadena Town Council. And that's it for the conditions. I want to go back to the condition about signage being posted to direct traffic exiting the Marketplace parking lot toward Lake Avenue. So the marketplace company does not own the, the parcel where the exit to Mariposa is. And so they are willing to post signage, but they would have to get permission from the owner of that parcel. So I think we need to amend the, the conditions to include that statement.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to you, Diane.
Okay, so this is the, the project that we voted on at land use and recommended to the town council, that it be approved with the conditions that Ann read. We do have public comment for tonight, so I don't know if you want Ann to make a motion now on that, or if you want to take public comment first.
What I would like to do is, that specific section that council member Coleman is asking, that a change be made, on that condition, I would like that to be tweaked, so that once we take public comment and she makes a recommendation for us to vote on, we already have the, the.
Okay, so, Ann, do you want to?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I move to amend that the paragraph beginning with signage shall be posted, shall be amended to say, the, the developer will post signage directing traffic to make a left turn towards Lake Avenue at the Mariposa exit if they receive permission from the owner of that parcel of land.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so you've heard the language changed to that specific condition. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Any abstention? Okay. You, you abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, so one abstention? Okay, so now we turn it back over to, we turn it over back to you, council member. And then we can take public comments at that time.
Well, I have, I believe I have nothing more to add. I'm ready to hear a public comment.
Perfect. Okay, moving on on this matter, public comments. The vice chair, Damon Hubd.
So we have public comments from 10 individuals, and I'm calling your name in no particular order. When you get up there to speak, you have two minutes. Also, please identify where you live in reference to the marketplace and whether you are for or against it. And additionally, be respectful of your resident, your fellow residents. We would appreciate that. If I get your name wrong, don't get me, don't get mad. Ms. Michelle Zach. And what I'm going to do is call the next three, so we can line up. Ms. Helen Overstreet?
Do I start?
No, just wait one second, Michelle. Ms. Mar, Marley Valcas? Ms. Mary Lee Valcas? And also Ms. Vicky Thompson. Okay, thanks. All right, go ahead, Michelle.
Michelle Zach, 2485 Ringo Avenue. "I wanted to speak in strong support for this project. For as long as I've lived in Altadena, and through all our various visioning processes and community conversations, this is what we hear all the time, that we need more places to recreate and dine in Altadena. So I hope that the council will pass this, and even, I would say, you know, on, on the weekend, until midnight would be a more reasonable time. Thank you very much."
Can you pass this on?
Thank you.
Helen Overstreet, I live on 1004 East Mariposa Street. I am currently opposed to the current CUP that's being presented. I just want to remind you that on paragraph one of the summary of the Altadena Community Plan, it says, foremost among the principal objectives of the community plan is the preservation of the existing residential character of the community. On March 31st, the land use committee presented conditions for consideration, and then they finalized it on May 2nd. On March 31st, they said, limit alcohol licenses to only four plus one. Then they changed it on May 2nd to six plus one. March 31st, it says, because of limited parking and expected high patronage due to multiple alcoholic beverages, require building owner to enter into or continue covenant with owner or owners of another parking lot or lots to allow overflow marketplace parking after 6:00 PM seven days a week. May 2nd, that was removed. March 31st, because of high patronage due to alcoholic beverage licenses, require valet parking to be triggered when Marketplace parking lot has reached 80% capacity. May 2nd, that was removed. And then it goes on with a whole bunch of other issues about valet parking, which all of those then were later removed. In March 31st, it said no bar and restaurant. May 2nd, that was removed. March 31st, live music shall stop at 10:00 PM. On May 2nd, live music accompanying dining shall not extend beyond operating hours. March 31st, hours for selling alcoholic beverages, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, or 30 minutes before closing. It was removed and added, sales of alcoholic beverages. It was removed and added, sales of alcoholic beverages shall end with closing time. These changes do not affect the Altadena community at large, but they do affect the surrounding community negatively.
Thank you so much.
Vicki Thompson, 80 Waupelo Street. And I find that I'm in favor of the Altadena Marketplace as proposed tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Mary Lee Valcas, and I live at 936 Beverly Way. And I'm here tonight to support the proposed Marketplace project. I think that we really need a place where families and friends can gather, and we just don't have that place in Altadena right now. And, you know, we have a couple of really good examples of where we do do that, and that is the second Saturdays that the library's been holding and as well as like the summer concert series that the sheriff's support group holds. People get together of all ages. They consume craft beer and wine and eat food, and everybody gathers together and has a great time and laughs. And then, you know, it's been, I think it's been a great success without any problems. So it's a great representative example of how we can all behave and, you know, with alcoholic beverages, we don't have to go crazy. So anyway, but I think that with all of the proposed hours that have been laid out and the parking, I think that I think that the community's done a great job at addressing the concerns. And I may get people parking on my street on Beverly Way. I think it's a small inconvenience for me to have a project like this that would really stand to benefit the community, so...
Thank you.
Anyway, that's...
Oh, she's good?
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Why's your thing going? Okay, the next four people. Ms. Shakur? You're not going to speak? Can you indicate whether you are opposed or...
I'm opposed to the...
The next four. Mr. Richard Lambascas? Did I pronounce that right? Sorry, but...okay. Sorry. Was I close? Was I close? Okay, thanks. Ms. Bonnie Lingle? Ms...or Mr. Bitza Lopez? Ms. Lopez? Mr. Lopez? Ms. Lopez, sorry about that. And Mr. Andre Dressler?
So I'm Richard Lambarcas. I live on Altadena Drive at Allen. And I'm in favor of voting for the CUP recommendation with the limits and restrictions that were outlined tonight. Altadena's revitalization means attracting and keeping good businesses, modern upmarket restaurants and community spaces. Businesses that give Altadena's modern, respectful adults a place to regularly come for good food, drinks, and community atmosphere. Some of those businesses that we want would never succeed here without a valuable alcohol license. It's just the way the restaurant business works. Value comes in flexibility in hours and flexibility in scope. A CUP, the CUP hours till 11:00 PM on weeknights and 10:00 during the week doesn't mean operating hours. There's lots of restaurants that have longer CUPs, and they close early because nobody comes to eat after a certain hour. And seating capacity of 200 does not mean there's going to be 100 cars in the parking lot all the time or even at peak times. They give the types of businesses we want here flexibility and value. If we restrict the CUP hours to close really early, if we ever wanted to do a Taste of Altadena event where people could come from 7:00 till 10:30 PM, we couldn't on that one day of the year because the CUP would not allow it. The immediate neighbors to the Marketplace deserve respect of their properties and their lifestyle. The restrictions I've heard tonight are well thought out and I believe appropriate to protect and honor that respect while at the same time bringing the positive change for the city and the community. I've heard a lot of fear of unwanted things, perhaps with experience of the bars that have been here. I don't want any of that either. If that happens at the Marketplace, the concept will shrivel up and die. And I think that's the biggest protection we have against all these negative impacts is Greenbridge needs to succeed. It needs to do well, and they have a vested interest in making sure that it's successful. So I see this as one more positive step to building a thriving downtown area, increasing property values, as it makes Altadena an even more desirable place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. [Laughter]
My name is Bonnie Lingle. I live at 940 East Mariposa Street. We have an issue with the left right turn only on Marchetta to get to Lake for this business plan. Well, I went that way because I picked up my neighbor, and the light changed twice on Lake but didn't change on Marchetta. So if people are exiting, going that way, they're going to be having a long wait. I was there for over five minutes and the light didn't change for me to proceed. It's turn on red light only, or green light only, no turn on red. Also, the approval from Meredith Miller and Mike Miller, who own Webster's Pharmacy, Meredith M. Dress Store, and the little post office within the pharmacy. I noticed that in this draft that there was no provision made for the existing tenants, which would be the pharmacy, the dress shop, the post office, and the apartment building. And there's only 42 parking spaces. The Webster's Pharmacy has two delivery vans that park overnight. They close delivery, I think, around 6:00 or 7:00 PM. So those two vans are going to be parked in two of those spaces. Also, the tenants are going to be parked in those spaces, the apartments. They can't restrict them from parking there because they took away two of the garages. Also, are they going to require that the pharmacy employees and owners and the dress shop all park off-site because they didn't have that agreement before? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Brisa Lopez, and I live at 2593 North Madison Avenue. And I would like to speak not only as a resident but also as a business owner. I was one of the first leasers for this project, but in the last year and a half, I have like started losing a lot of credibility on it. And unfortunately, and all the information that I have has proved, first, I was told that I will be the only ones selling Mexican food, then today I realize it's not true. And second of all, as soon as I signed the lease, all the communication from the owners of this project stopped. I actually wanted for many information, and I got also for a laser on the Washington Building, then they also bought and then sold. And that people increased 50% taxes, and they are stuck with a lease, and that people is not caring about that. And I'm scared me as a business owner and Altadena resident, that it's going to happen to me as well. Now, I know that right now is too late because you guys approve it, but I would actually like you to take that in consideration. I wanted out of my contract. I was saying no, and I gave my enough reasons, and I would just like to you guys consider that because I'm stuck with a seven years lease for something that is already not going to work for me because I'm going to have the competition within the same building. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
I'm Andre Dressler, and I live on 1920 East Altadena Drive. Been a six-year resident of Altadena now. Started to really have the community grow on me. I'm for this project, and I'm because we need places for people to go and eat, and I would like the area to be upscale. If we do not have liquor licenses there...I'm from Europe originally. For me, to have a meal without a glass of wine, a dinner without a glass of wine is just not a dinner. So, yeah, or a beer or whatever it is. But if we do not get liquor licenses in there and have the availability of it, we will have a lower quality, and with that also comes a different kind of clientele. So I think the limitations that are being put on are more than reasonable. I think they should actually be more lenient. And as we have seen from some restaurants like Alta Eats, that has become, although they have zero advertising on the outside of the building and online, they are doing extremely well. Also Claude and Company at the bottom of Allen, they're doing really well. They also have a second outlet now on Washington. So we will get a much better type of experience if we let this go on with that. So I'm absolutely for this project. Thank you.
We have two other public comments, one from Dorian Quispe, and the other from Andrew...I'm sorry, I can't see the last name, but the first name is Andrew.
That one's for me there.
Huh? Who said that?
What?
Oh, Steve. Oh, I didn't...did you? From Steve?
Public comment, but we don't have that here.
It's not related to that. I give it to you. These are yacht sale and these other...
No, I don't see...
Steve, who did you give it to?
Yes, he submitted one, yes.
Okay. So between there and here...
It hasn't made it over.
Where did it go?
I don't have it. Well, you'll be on there, and you can make your public comment. Let's move on. Ms. Quispe?
My name is Dorian Kispah. I live at 2386 Allen Avenue. I've born and raised in Pasadena, but I've been living in Pasadena or Altadena for the last four years. I support this recommendation. Restaurants have always been the leader in reshaping neighborhoods. My own experience, I have a property on South Lake District on the corner of Lake and Cordova. 13 years ago, if you wanted something to eat at night and you head south of California, you had Burger Continental, and that's basically it. Today, that whole area has completely shifted. I celebrated Mother's Day with three different mothers on Sunday. It was fantastic. The area has changed. My property value has gone up. In a growing digitized America, people crave social experience. If you go to Facebook and Instagram today, most of the pictures you're going to see is the fine dining, meals, and wine. You're not going to see people in bars doing keggers. In addition to the digital impact that we have seen on the food industry, the retail industry has been completely destroyed by such entities as Amazon. 20 years ago, the space at Webster could have been anything, a bookstore, a shoe store, whatever. But today, with Prime Shipping, retail jobs have been declining for years. Ground floor retail is becoming increasingly synonymous with restaurants today. I strongly believe that our local economy and employment depend on restaurants. If you look at other examples of big retailers such as Starbucks, for example, did a very extensive testing and introducing wine and spirits, wine and beer, into their after-hour operations. They realized after five years that wasn't working, but it has worked in their high-end roastery establishments, right? So as we look at the liquor licenses, I do agree with the previous gentleman, who happens to be my father-in-law, that we will get a higher clientele as we allow these entrepreneurs to cater to a higher-end dining experience here in Altadena. And as he had mentioned before, Alta Eats, if we look at revitalization efforts such as Old Town Pasadena, Monrovia, Arcadia, eating downtown LA, these areas have changed on the backs of restaurants, and I strongly support this measure.
Thank you.
Ms. Liam, if you come forward as well, we'd appreciate it.
Hi. My name's Andrew Del Bay. I live at 944 Marchetta, so I'm one of the neighbors directly impacted, and I actually support the project. I think John and Ann have done a good job coming up with reasonable compromises. I think 10:00 and 11:00 for the hours are good. I know the residents are worried about parking, and I think one solution, on Marchetta, we already have parking restrictions, and we could apply for more, you know, longer hours for parking. Like my neighbor Mary Lee said, I think it'd be great to have a place where the neighbors can get together, we can walk to, I mean, for the ones that would look...the good thing is we can actually walk to a place to have wine and cocktails. My one concern is with the vendors that they do, that the developers do attract, what they are saying artisanal vendors, and I don't want them to like screw over Leesies like, you know, the woman that spoke. I did hear that they might be renting to a chain restaurant, a chain Mexican restaurant, and I hope that instead of something like that, that they would attract the sophisticated, upscale restaurants that they are advertising. But overall, I do support the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Steve Lamb. I live at 403 Ventura Street, 2.3 miles away from the project. I oppose the project. I agree with...I will probably eat at the project if it opens because I want places to eat at in Altadena. But, you know, one of my main reasons for opposition is that the county has done a very bizarre thing. They have decided to ignore the statute that they passed in 1979 and getting rid of all the grandfathering on Lake Avenue in Altadena. And they have by fiat, by executive decision, by administrative fiat, just decided, okay, we're going to do grandfathering. And 15 years ago, when Bill Webster tried to reopen up his hot dog counter, one hot dog counter with 10 stools, that he closed in 1956, the county wouldn't let him do that because he couldn't meet any of the modern requirements. Here, we're going to have six restaurants, not hot dog counters, real restaurants. Not one of these can meet the current standards that the county normally demands. And the problem with that is that at any time, someone can change their mind in the county by executive fiat and impose on someone else these same standards. And I think before we do any of this waiving and special favors for people like we did at the Aldi and like we did at Cafe Leche, I think we need to like take a serious look and put it in the statute for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, you're not late. You're not late. That's okay. Does anybody else have any public comment on this subject that hasn't come forward yet or hasn't given a comment card? Okay, thank you very much.
I live on Marchetta Street, which is just obviously right next to the proposed development. I've been talking very often with my wife and with a lot of our neighbors about how much we need some kind of small restaurant. I eat regularly at Alta Eats. It's wonderful, and I wish it were closer to home because then I could walk with my daughter. Cafe de Leche was mentioned. I go there every single morning with my daughter, who's two years old, and clearly she's not going to join me for a cocktail at this new development, but my wife will and any clients that happen to come to my house will. And I think it's very important that we get it, and I've been waiting for it for a long time, and I'm strongly in support of it, as I know most of my friends on Marchetta are. So I'm sure the more vociferous ones are those who are anti the idea, but I'm lending my voice to say, go Marketplace.
Thank you.
May I have the speaker's name?
We didn't get your name. Sorry about that.
Julian Shaw Taylor. Thank you.
Yep. I have it. That's it.
Okay. The last speaker will be council member White. He has something he wants to read into the record, and then we will take, I'll later 10, a motion after that.
I have a statement I would like to read for the record concerning this. The Altadena Marketplace project has required extensive research, discussion, and consideration. Balancing the needs for reasonable development along the Lake Avenue Commercial Corridor with the concerns of residents adjacent that corridor is the challenge. Reasonable development and keeping with the Altadena Visioning Statement, the wants of residents throughout Altadena for dining options, and the requirements by small business owners and developers to commit to projects where numerous storefronts have remained closed for multiple years presents an opportunity for the entire community to look towards its future and share in the shaping of our downtown hub. Maintaining the look and feel of Altadena is foremost in the minds of the alternate town council. The fact that the council has any input on this project is solely the result of the required CUP. Conditions recommended by the Land Use Committee, reviewed by the alternate town council, and presented to the Regional Planning Commission, may not be a factor in the final decision. Ultimately, we are governed by Los Angeles County agencies. Accusations have been made concerning the role... Accusations have been made concerning the role of council members colluding with developers. Nothing could be further from the truth. Census tract representatives have turned this issue inside out and exercised critical analysis of claims made on every side. Altadena Marketplace operating hours have been radically reduced from the original request. Lighting, noise and traffic have been addressed with specific conditions. Solutions to parking concerns for those residents located on public streets have been presented. Although not a part of the CUP revision to the terms of the special parking district on Marchetta is underway at the Department of Regional Planning. Living along a commercial corridor has pros and cons. The cons might include additional traffic, noise and parking. All have been addressed with conditions in the CUP. The pros include a walkability component that allows access to multiple dining venues, a pharmacy, hardware store, clothing stores and many other services available without requiring one to drive. In addition, home values trend higher for those within walking distance of a reasonably developed commercial corridor. Third Street Promenade, Abbott Kinney and Highland Park are good examples. A vibrant downtown for Altadena serves everyone, businesses, residents and visitors. The uncharacteristically short five year CUP condition provides the opportunity for local review of operation of the Altadena Marketplace. The prospect of success bodes well for our community and the reasonable development along the Lake Avenue Corridor is a plus.
So I just wanted to, thanks, John. I just wanted to, real quickly, before we move to a vote, remind everybody, those of you that we've seen before doing public comment. For the rest of you that may not understand, we're going to take a vote tonight. That vote will be to recommend to the Regional Planning Commission, either approval or denial, with or without conditions of a project. That's what we do. All we do is send down, we say this is what we found in the community, this is what our conditions would be. And the Regional Planning Commission makes that decision. We do not. So we will make sure that as soon as, and we don't have a hearing date yet, right, Ann?
July 19th, tentatively.
Oh, okay. So right now, July 19th is the, it will be the day for the hearing down at the Regional Planning Commission. And they welcome public comment there as well. So I just want to make sure that that's where the actual decision will be made about this conditional use permit. Having said that, Ann, do you have a motion that you want to do?
Yes, I wanted to just first ask council members if they had any questions that may have been raised by the public comments or?
Oh, I actually did.
Do I make the motion first?
Well, let me just say this because we did hear that one. I think in part of our discussion, you talked about working with the county about changing the timing on the traffic lights. Did you not? Okay. So that's not in as a condition. Should we add it in as a condition?
That can't be a condition according to the planner.
Oh, okay, right, because it's not enforceable. But that is one of the parts of the project that has already been discussed with regional planning and that will take place.
Yes, and it has to be Department of Public Works that addresses that.
That's right.
Marketplace can't really change the timing.
Traffic and lighting. So, and we can, the town council can make sure that that happens when, as the project gets closer. But we've already, we've already, the county's already aware. Okay.
Councilmember Malone, do you have a question?
Yeah, more of a statement that, you know, a lot of people have said how much we have a need for this and the small businesses and we heard from one person at the back who serves Mexican food. Regardless of what, how the vote goes tonight, I think if that's what you want, we need to support our local business. And if you get a chance, they serve their food at the market every Wednesday at the Altadena Farmers Market. Please support them. If they move into the new marketplace, support them. If you want the local businesses to come and you want it to be local, then support those ones there. Because if there is too much commercial places there, I know the one I'm going to. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. So please support local.
Well, the other, the other thing too, just as a point of discussion with everybody is that I, even if, I know we, this builder or this developer does have a history of buying a property and then selling it and moving on, but even with the new owner, if they don't put businesses in there that Altadena will visit and eat there and be happy with, they will fail. And they should, I'm sure as business people, they know that, right?
Well, we can't control who a landlord rents to.
That's right.
But as a community, we can control who we support.
That's exactly right. Right. Who we go, who we go eat our food from. So that's just, you know, vote with your dollars when it finally, when it finally happens. But I would hope that they're looking at this business as bringing in businesses, not just to fill the slots, but to bring in businesses that will succeed. So.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Robertson? Okay, so I'm ready to entertain a motion.
So I move that the town council recommend approval of the conditional use permit, R P P L 2016004021, as described earlier and with conditions of approval as read earlier and as amended earlier.
Are you saying you recommend sending a letter down to regional planning?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you say that. Yeah. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, the motion has been properly moved, seconded by Councilmember Mossen. Any other question concerned from the, from the council? Okay, Councilmember Robertson?
I have a few questions. So the bulk of the work on these land use items happens in the land use committee. So by the time it gets to this stage, a lot of the kinks have been worked out for the most part. But since I was, of course, not at the last land use committee, some of these questions may have been answered, but they were again brought up tonight by some of the speakers. So I was hoping that John and Ann, you could indulge me and answer them one more time. So whatever happened to the discussion about valet parking?
We removed that, that condition because we thought it might, it wouldn't help the parking situation because many people don't want to use valet parking. And they would just bypass the valet and go park on Marchetta and Mariposa anyway. So we didn't really see it as a solution. And also it seemed rather complicated to trigger. There was this thing about eighty, once the parking lot is 80% full, that triggers valet parking. But it just seemed very tricky to implement. And I, we think also that if the developer is going to have to figure out how to solve valet, maybe they'll decide to do valet parking on their own if they think that's the best solution. But it just seemed that it wasn't going to work.
Well, yeah, and let me just add that the requirement, the discussion about valet parking ended up being that the valet, it would only be acceptable to the neighbors if the valet was in the front of the building. So, and that's not really, that wouldn't be convenient for the, well, it would impact Lake because people would be lining up to drop their cars off, right? And then lining up to get their cars back. I think there was concern about the noise in the parking lot of the people that are, that would be there waiting for their cars. So altogether, it was not a, wasn't really going to solve the problem and was an extra, a harder item to enforce from the code enforcement.
And in addition to that, I remember, I remember a statement being made that residents would have to pay for the valet parking.
Well, not, yeah, the patrons, we can't require that it be free.
Right.
So the patrons would have to pay for valet parking.
When it comes to valet parking, valet parking also needs a place to park. And valet parkers are famous for parking at the nearest place possible, which would be in front of a neighbor. They could be less considerate, they're less considerate with your car and they'd be less considerate with their neighbors than somebody who's going with their family, who has a car that's concerned about being scratched and just pushed in somewhere and be more concerned about people's driveways. Now, valet parking works if you have a location to take it to. But there isn't a location and we ask them to park it somewhere else further down Lake or something.
I know that one, part of the discussion about potential parking impacts from this project involved discussion about the new parking lot that's going in next to Fire Station 11. Was that not seen as a viable option for valet parking? Because I understand it's seen as a viable option for directing overflow parking too. Why not therefore also for valet parking?
The parking lot you're talking about is, it's only recently been passed by county. The sheriff have the use of that parking lot along with the businesses and the residential. There was a parking issue with a lot of the residents along Al-Malino, who, there's a lot of apartment buildings there that do not have adequate parking. They will use that facility. They were having issues with the business taking up the parking on the street. So now, if we, after the residents acquiring extra parking so they can get into their homes, you know, people with maybe disabilities or whatever that have trouble walking a long distance up the streets trying to find parking, have those, and then all of a sudden we're going to give it to a valet for business a block away.
So the expectation is it isn't, the expectation is that that lot will not be empty. It will not just be available for shared parking, meeting shared parking requirements, for example.
I would assume, this is an assumption, when you drive by, and I take it to everybody, drive by that neighborhood at about 8 o'clock at night when you leave here and you'll see the cars all lined up, Mariposa, up Al-Malino, all the way down from everywhere. That's, and I'm, so I'm assuming that parking lot will be full very quickly. And the county has offered it for use for everybody.
So on that, the request to make it a five year CUP, is your understanding that every ounce of this CUP will be reviewable at that time? Are there any limitations on what will be back on the table in five years?
This, it expires. It would expire. If this goes through, it would expire and it'd be like getting another, my understanding is it'd be like getting another CUP.
It's the same as when we look at alcohol CP's that we can also look at parking. So, so the, and that's particularly one of the reasons why we've asked for a five year CUP, which is really sort of extraordinary. I mean, we don't ordinarily do that and that's specifically to look at what the impact is to the community because we don't entirely, there's no way to really know how it's going to, how it's going to work out. Anytime we do, this CUP is for, is the alcohol piece. But anytime we do that, we can also, I mean, we're putting in conditions that say that the parking lot has to be striped a certain way and people coming in and out. So all of that will be, will expire.
This is a question for Billy and Akori. One of the things that came up during this process was concerns that this would be another Rancho Bar who apparently are not the greatest of neighbors from time to time. And that's in your census tract. And I just sort of want reassurance that the community concerns around, you know, Rancho Bar patrons have been heard and we're doing something in that regard.
Well, I'll comment on this because I work in hospitality industry and I worked in both bars and restaurants. Rancho is a bar. They do not, they are not a restaurant. They are not sit down. They have gaming devices, pool tables, and they serve alcohol. That's their purpose. And they are open to the full length of a bar, which is past midnight, 1:00. They're applying for a restaurant license, which requires them to sell a certain amount of food. Remember, the Rancho is not allowed to have children, anyone under 21. A restaurant is for family, so therefore family can go because they're serving food. And they have to sell a certain amount of food. And if I remember from the conditions, food has to be sold all the time that they're selling alcohol.
I'm, I'm asking about the complaints that we heard through this process, not about this project, but relative to this project because it generated fears that this project could result in similar, you know, folks traipsing across front lawns or excessive noise or that sort of thing. So I'm asking you about the Rancho Bar specifically. And are we doing anything to, you know, reach out to the sheriff or the county or anything on those concerns?
Totally different subject. The answer is yes.
Yeah, I think we, what we have here is apples and oranges.
And something came out regarding Rancho as a result of the Altadena Marketplace.
I don't have any direct complaint regarding the activities at Rancho. So I will leave it at that because they are unrelated. Okay?
I just want to say that, you know, we went through all of this stuff at the land use and I'm sorry that you weren't there, but, you know, we really can't go through all of it again.
I'm good.
Thanks, bro.
Okay, Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah, just one question for yourself, for Mr. Chairman or Ann or John. My question has to do with traditionally, how is it voiced when we, if in fact this is approved by the board? It, how is that letter drafted in recommendation? Does it also carry the concerns of the opposing residents? That's my question.
The answer is when the communication that goes to the, to the, to the regional planning, it will have some of, more of a summation of what transpired at the land use as well as the Altadena Town Council with respect to the community.
So if I understand you, yes, it will include it. Thank you.
All right, you have heard the motion and properly seconded. And council members, are you ready for a vote? Okay, all in favor of the CUP as read, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you. Unanimous.
Okay, now, there we go again. We're going to try to move through this part quickly. At the last town council meeting, we made a motion and it was approved to, I'll wait just a minute, to send a letter to Catherine Barker, Supervisor Catherine Barker's office, asking them please to go back and look another time at the fences and hedges, which is really fences, walls and landscaping is really what the section is called. And to have staff look at it. I have that letter here, which I will read into the, into the record. I did want to mention that the, the plan was for Supervisor Barker to take this, to, take some action on it at the meeting a week from tonight, which is the, the meeting of the supervisors where public comment is taken and all of that. The, she will be in Washington DC. The item was going to be continued anyway, but it will be on the agenda. So for those of you who look at the supervisor agenda, you will see that this item is on the agenda. She will not be in town for that meeting, so it will be continued to the end of June. However, sending this letter down now and allowing her office to have it before she leaves to go to Washington DC, there's work that can be done because we're asked, because we're asking them to do more work on it and not just saying approve it this way. It behooves us to get the letter down there now. So the, the letter states regarding Altadena CSD fences, walls and landscaping, Dear Supervisor Barker, several months ago, you asked the Altadena Town Council, ATC, to review some possible changes to the fences, walls and landscaping portions of the Altadena CSD revision based on the fact that Altadena is still greatly divided on this issue. After both the ATC Land Use Committee and the Altadena Town Council provided multiple opportunities for additional public comment, the result is clear. Altadena is as divided today as it was with the original version. Many residents are opposed to the changes citing the impact of enforcement and the associated costs. They request that their fences and hedges be grandfathered in because they can't easily be made legal. Many other residents support the RPC approved version of the CSD citing improvement in pedestrian safety and walkability, which is a safety and walkability, which is a priority in Altadena. Part of the challenge comes from the fact that there are many currently illegal fences, walls, and landscaping because code violations have gone unenforced through a series of moratoriums over the decades. It appears that these moratoriums were each requested because the enforcement of the fences, walls, and landscaping code has historically been a difficult item to deal with in Altadena. Rather than proceed with difficult enforcement, the county chose to put a moratorium in place instead. Unfortunately, given the impact to residents due to needed safety design changes and county enforcement costs, the Altadena Town Council is unable to recommend a solution that is acceptable to the community. Instead, we request that you have county staff continue to work on this section of the CSD to provide a more comprehensive plan for enforcement that addresses the community concerns associated with the cost and timeframes of enforcement. This should also address their position on illegal fences that may have been in existence for as many as 80 years. It is extremely important to note that the overall CSD revision includes many great improvements which will enhance living in Altadena. Altadena is anxious to have those implemented. We requested any changes resulting from the fences, walls, and landscaping review requested above be completed as soon as possible so that the CSD revision can be adopted in its entirety. In addition to implementing the improvements which will help our commercial districts and other areas, any delay in the implementation of enforcement of fences, walls, or landscaping only exacerbates the problem. Thank you for your attention to this important matter. So, that's the, the letter that was drafted based on the motion from last month that will go down. I will address that we, we should not be saying to them, go ahead and pull fences and hedges out and, and approve the rest of it, because we want them to understand how important it is for us that it all go through, and not that it gets put on a back burner and we never see it again. So, that's why this does not say do that.
Okay.
Supervisor Barker can make that decision if she needs to. So, I just wanted to, to let you guys know that and read it into the record. The last thing that I have is about New York Drive. Many of you have seen...
Just one moment. I, I note that
Oh, public comment.
For the agenda, we did say public comment.
There wasn't any, though, right?
We do not have any public comments at, at this moment related to CSD, so you may now proceed to the next...
So, many of you have seen that there's work being done on New York Drive now. New York, the work on New York Drive has been put off for actually many, well, for a couple of years now anyway, because of the, the proposed water pipeline that was gonna go down New York Drive. The county has made a decision to go ahead and do a 10-week sort of restoration project on New York Drive, which is going on now. They're starting at the Lake Avenue end, and they will go to Altadena Drive. The reason they're not doing New York Drive west of that, of Lake is because there were speed bumps put in not long ago, and so that part of the road is not as bad as the rest of it. So, they're doing that for the next 10 weeks. The, they will, they are going to do their best to make it, to fill in the, I think it's 44 of the worst areas on, 40 or 44, something like that, on New York Drive. It's gonna take 10 weeks. In 2019, the plan is for them to remove all of New York Drive down to the dirt, and to re-engineer, they'll do the re-engineering before they take the road out, to make a re-engineering plan for New York Drive, particularly the south side of New York Drive, where the, where the water drains and, and all of that. So, I just wanted to let you know that that is the, we will, we will keep track of their plan for 2019, but, and we will have somebody, when they have something to tell us, we will have them come report to us about what they're gonna do. But that'll be an entire removal, it'll be a big project. So, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, and moving on to the 5.2, Altadena Feminine, councilmember Coleman.
The filming committee has, oh, I wanted to report two things, basically. One, that the detailed notes of the town hall that took place at the end of February, they're up on the ATC website now, if anybody wants to read this. It's several pages long, and every topic, I think, that came up during the town hall meeting is in those notes. And the second thing I wanted to mention is that there, there is a whole page, or nearly a whole page, in the new Altadena Heritage Newsletter dedicated to describing what went on at the town hall, at the, at the filming committee's town hall and location filming. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Here we are, election committee, councilmember Sutherland.
Finally. As I'm rather sure that an awful lot of you here are aware, that the election for one seat in each of the census tracts, of the eight census tracts, is being held on June 10th with early voting on June 6th. So tonight, I'm going to introduce you to the candidates who will be running, and who will each give a up to three-minute statement. I want to announce, for anyone who hasn't checked our website for the list of candidates, that there are currently no candidates for the open seats in tracks 4601 and 4612. But our bylaws has a procedure for when this happens in order to solicit candidates for those empty seats, and we'll be announcing tho, that procedure immediately after the June election, so as not to kind of confuse it with, with what's happening now. So, with that... You gonna time me? Or time them?
Think...
Time me? I'm not talking.
Councilmember Mossen, please.
Yeah, he can do it. Up to three minutes.
He's gonna tie yourself.
Yeah.
Tie yourself six minutes.
We'll start census tract by census tract alphabetically within the census tract. So for tract number 4602, could we have Monique Baca-Giri? Thank you, Monique.
I'm gonna go get some water. Joan?
Water. Sorry.
You wanna get another water?
Good evening. My name's Monique Baca-Giri, and I have lived in Altadena for 29 years, and worked in Altadena for 30 years. I am married, my wife is in the audience, and my daughter Bella and my son Sam have attended schools here, both charter and their public schools, and most of my family lives in Altadena. And I have been called to action, I, I have always been interested in community activism and politics, and realized that I needed to put my money where my mouth is, and I have, and, and this opportunity came up. What I, I would like to say that the, the community websites, the, the neighborhood app, and beautiful Altadena, they're a really wonderful way to connect people, and it has allowed me a way to look in to see what's going on in the community. Let's see. I love Altadena. I, I was not raised here, but I've lived my whole adult life here, and in watching what's going on with Aldi's and the community marketplace, I feel that there just needs to be a voice in the community for all of these things, and I am excited to run for this election. It's something new for me, and it will be definitely a learning curve, but if I am elected, I will be happy and grateful to serve this community. Thank you.
All right. And also for census tract 4602, could we have Mr. Billy Malone, please?
Hi, my name's Billy Malone, and I commend Monique for coming up and wanting to do something that was me. I ran, this will be my third time. I prepared a speech, but I'm just gonna read you the first bit, then I'm gonna talk off the cuff. I lived in Altadena for 12 years, and faced with a personal issue many years ago, I decided instead of complaining about the injustice we face, I would get involved. Being in love with our hometown of Altadena, made running for the office of Altadena Town Council the natural first step. I have now been on Town Council member for several years, and this will be my third run as a representative of this census tract 4602. Should I be re-elected, I only wish to continue being the best representative I can. It is truly my honor to serve. That's just part of what I was gonna say. But, what, I, I, for those who know me, recently I ran for a larger office, and one of the things I, I strongly feel if you represent an area, you better know the area, and I don't know if many of you know that, but I committed to do a 300-mile walk straight through the district that I was gonna, running to represent, so that I would know every area of it. It took me 27 days, and I did it straight. To know Altadena, I live here, I get involved as much as I can. Gloria over here, we've done the homeless count. I did it this year with Ann Lancing, we drove the census tract, counting the homeless, getting involved in the LA County. We dedicated to this area of Altadena. I've since been getting involved with the PSD, supporting PUSD, I've helped write a letter for support to get grants for expanding the Magnet Program. I just came this evening from opening the Altadena Elementary School, and one thing you have to remember about me is that I always say, when you're looking at anybody running for an election, it's, don't ask what they're gonna do when they win, ask what they're gonna do when they lose. Because if you really want to know how committed they are to the community, or what they're saying, ask what they're gonna do when they lose. If I lose this election this time on my third term, I'm not going anywhere. This is my town, I'm committed, I'm still gonna be here and doing, and those who know me know how true that is, and I'll do the best I can. And there's two of us running this tract, and Monique, you seem like a very formidable candidate, and you sound like you're coming from an honest level, so, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. For 4603.01, we have two candidates, and first will be Damon Hobbde.
Good evening to the community, my name is Damon Lamont-Hobbde, and I am your census tract representative for 4603.01. I'm an approximately 46-year resident of Altadena. About four years ago, when I ran for Altadena Town Council, there was a member of the Altadena Town Council named Mr. Jamie Bisner, and someone asked him the question, what would you do differently? I asked myself that question, what would I do differently in my four-year term? And the answer is nothing. I've been very committed to Altadena and to you, the residents. I was the recording secretary on the Altadena Town Council. I would make sure that you had accurate rendition of the meeting minutes. I would take a Saturday of a month and make sure that I comprised the, the meeting minutes so that you could look at them, and you didn't have to attend the council meeting, you would know what went on. I've been committed. I'm now the vice chair, and I participated with the executive committee, and we're doing certain things that are beneficial, not only for you residents, but also for the Altadena Town Council as a body. I think by the fact that we have somebody running against me shows that the Altadena Town Council is not only apparent, but known to other individuals and residents in the community. I've been committed. At approximately 7:00 AM, approximately two weeks ago, I met with residents on Glen Rose, 7:00 AM. I arranged to have Public Works come in and to meet with us concerning speed bumps in the area because of the fact that there's been speeding on Glen Rose right there in Altadena. About 10 residents met with me in the morning, and the Public Works. I've been committed. Additionally, there was a issue on Calonda in Altadena concerning two residents. I went over there and I mediated that dispute. That was approximately a year ago. I haven't heard from those residents anymore. Evidently, what I did worked. I've been committed. I also have participated with my colleague Judy Matthews on La Vina, and trying to resolve a very intricate and important issue for you residents. It's taken a lot of our time. I've been committed. Additionally, I have put in bus benches from Glen Rose all the way down to Loma, all the way down to Lincoln. There was an area that needed expansion. I, through my efforts, the county expended over $10,000 putting in a bus bench and trashcan so that the space could be commensurate with wheelchair spaces, and bus benches and trashcans are all the way down from Glen Rose and Altadena down to Lincoln. I've been committed. I could go on and on about the things I've done, from the sidewalk issue, from putting in a sign on Glen Rose, excuse me, on Lincoln, by Lincoln, between Lincoln and Glen Rose, which stops traffic, or stops people from parking during the time that the street sweepers are there. There's gonna be signs put up in August, and I was the... So I've been committed to Altadena residents. Lastly, I want to say those treats you got in the back, those are from my mother, so if I, if I'm not on the council, you get no trees.
We love you, Mom. That's right.
Okay, running against you in 4603.01 is Dorothy Wong. Dorothy?
How are you all? My name is Dorothy Wong, and I am a 15-year resident, and that lovely gentleman here came to my door, and he said he was running for town council, and I have full respect for Damon and all the great work he does, and we're in just a really exciting time in Altadena and all across Los Angeles County. And so, my background, I, first of all, I love Altadena. My husband Jeff, born and raised, sitting back there with his family, JPL employees, and, you know, it's just a wonderful place. He said we should move to Altadena. Where is Altadena? I lived in Burbank at the time. So, long story short, he got me to move here, we had great conversations with the neighbors, and that was 15 years ago. So, now, I am semi-retired from working in television production, which I did for 20 years. I'm a strong advocate and one of the leading bicycling and pedestrian educators in all of Los Angeles County. I also helped with Michael Byetti when I bought my home in James Village, to actually have it become a historic district. When I lived in Burbank, I was on the Citizen Advisory Committee to create the Chandler Bike Path, which is a multi-use path, which has become the center focus of the city of Burbank. So, I also have started up a organization that builds bicycling from 40 people to 5,000. So I think my expertise is really in community building, bringing people together. Safety and mobility, for me, is a huge issue in Altadena. I still don't see sidewalks, I just spent, I think, 12 hours doing bicycle and pedestrian counts. We have less than 1% of residents actually walk or bike in Altadena. Thousands of cars are rushing up and down, but the residents who didn't bike or walk said, what are you doing? And they said, I don't feel safe on the streets. So to me, that's a, a big issue that I would love to address. So, back to Mr. Billy Malone's point, if I don't get elected, I would love to be elected, I would love to represent, I would love to see equity, I would love to keep Altadena becoming a better place. We all love Altadena, right? That's why you're here? So, if I don't get elected, that's not a positive way to look at this, is this? I will continue to get involved, I will continue to be part of making Altadena a better place, make Altadena better together. Vote for Dorothy Wong, Town Council, 43, 4603.01. Aloha.
In census tract 4603.02, we have Dr. Sandra Thomas. Wait, I know she's here.
Yeah, she is.
There, all right. All right. Who is running unopposed, but I know we want to hear from her anyway, right?
Put them glasses on. Don't start that thing yet. He knew I had to just say something to him, just something motherly, you know. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Sandra Thomas, and... My name is Dr. Sandra Thomas, and I'm running unopposed, thank goodness. I'm a 40-year resident of Altadena, residing in Census Tract 4603.02, and I feel, I've been around a while, and my love for Altadena, I've pretty much shown in the community, because I've had 40 years of really dedicated, continuous service. And I think that should pretty much qualify me to return to the Altadena Town Council. I previously served on this council for many, many years, working with the current chair and some few people that were in that day. And I chaired the council for a few years as well. I also served on our wonderful Land Use Committee when I was part of that team. I want to say I designed the Altadena flag. We didn't have a flag in Altadena, which currently is the only legally flown flag over Altadena. As well as, as you can see, it stands in the corner of many buildings in Altadena, so I'm glad to see that it's still over there on that pole. I've had the privilege to serve on many, many Altadena boards. I've served as the head of many Altadena organizations over these 40 years, as well as I've been involved in many, if not most, major Altadena developments and projects. And I do that because I'm very excited about our growth as well as our expansion in Altadena. People simply know me as that woman that goes around but she gets things done. But I wanted to tell you, I also, I work hard, but I love what I do. A few years back, I was honored to be Altadena Citizen of the Year, and they told me that they gave me that honor because I'd worked so long and so hard. And we had fun that night, but it was humbling for me because it was good to see that my community cared and was concerned about the work that I'd done, I really appreciated that. You know what, I'm not going to talk anymore because if you've done, my grandma used to say, "If you've done anything, everybody already knows about it." But there is a long list of what I've done in the community, and it's in my bio, and it's been appropriately placed with our election chair for, and I think we have that for public review. So, in closing, just let me say this. I know that I understand this community and I understand our needs. I also know that much has been done, but there's still a lot to be done. I truly love Altadena, and I'll continue to do my part, and I'll do my very best to improve the quality of life for all of us. So, with that said, thank you for your attention. I'm asking and thanking you in advance for your support, especially if you live in 4603.02. And I thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank you, council, for this opportunity. Have a continued great evening.
Thank you.
In Census Tract 4610, we do have two candidates.
Good evening, and thank you for attending the meeting and allowing me to, the opportunity to introduce myself. Thank you to the town council for making this possible. I'm your neighbor, I'm Veronica Jones. I'm here because I would like the opportunity to be of service to the good people of Altadena by serving on the town council. When I am elected to the town council, I will work to make Census Tract 4610 safer, greener, and cleaner. My husband and I have lived in, my husband's over there, we have lived in, on Cuyahoga Avenue in Altadena for 33 years. I have lived in Altadena for over 55 years. I attended Altadena and Pasadena schools, including Thomas Edison, Elliott, John Muir, and PCC. I have raised three children in this community, and it's very important to me. I have a master's degree in organizational development and over 20 years' experience in city government. I have participated in our neighborhood watch group, SNC. I have participated in the election of other officials, and now I'd like to take my participation to a higher level by becoming a member of the Altadena Town Council. We live in a beautiful community, but in my census tract, I have watched a steady decline in how safe my neighborhood is. I have watched the need for a greener community, and I have watched a decline in how clean our streets are. I am motivated to work to turn things around, I have ideas to make positive changes, I am passionate about Altadena being safer, cleaner, and greener. I'm going to take the advice of President Obama. Change will not come if we wait for some other person or some other time. So, now is the time for me to serve my community. When elected to town council, I will listen, be responsive to the community. I know the importance of being proactive, not always reactive. I will always use my skills as a listener, as someone who is responsive and is a good communicator, to carry out the needs and concerns of Census Tract 4610. I will work with the town council to make Altadena the best it can be. When elected, I can start the movement towards a safer, greener, cleaner neighborhood in Census Tract 4610. It will be an honor to serve in this Altadena community. Thank you.
Nestor, are you timing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure. Also, 4610, we have Mr. Brent Musson.
Somebody's going to have to time me because I'm...
That's Nestor.
Oh, thanks, Nestor. Okay, so, my name is Brent Musson. I've represented 4610 for the last three terms, that's six years. I've had three track mates during that time, Tecumseh Shackelford, Michelle Martinez, and now our timer, Nestor Delatorre. During that time, I've held three town halls, sponsored a cleanup on Lincoln, co-sponsored a home cleanup, which is a volunteer effort with one of our local churches. I actually built the website that we have now. I was a member of the stakeholder committee, Sheriff's Stakeholder Committee, which, under which I participated in the, in the development of sensitivity training for the Altadena Sheriff's Department, as well as training for young African-American men who happen to be pulled over by law enforcement. I've also served as the recording secretary on this body, way back, and the list goes on and on and on. But the most important thing, I think, about being a council member is the relationships that you build. The reason I started off with the amount of time that I've served is that over that time, I've been able to build relationships with county departments, with the supervisor's office, and with the community. And the job is really about understanding where our limitations are, what it is that we can and can't do, and what our purpose is. It's not possible for us to come and act like a city. And so, a great place to start, if you are interested in being a member of this body, is to start as a member of the Land Use Committee. Most of what happens here is actually ratification of the work that happens at the Land Use Committee. The issues that we spoke about tonight and voted on are the ratification of months of work at the land use level. So, it's a really important place to start as a land use member, and by the time you are here, you have a really good handle on what's going on. Just a little bit about my credentials, I have a degree in real estate development, as well as a degree in planning. In two years, I'll finish my doctorate in law and policy, and so I'm well-qualified by credential to do this work. But again, the most important work here is about the relationships that take time to build. The best place to start building those is in the land use, and I'm proud to have been a member of the Land Use Committee now for seven years. So, thank you very much, and I hope to see you on Election Day.
Thank you. In 4611, running unopposed this time is Justin Robertson.
Hello. Neighbors and friends, my name is Justin. I've lived here for about six years in the Little Spanish duplex at Woodbury and El Molino, with my wife Gabriella and my pit bull Rosie. I humbly ask your support in my reelection to the Altadena Town Council, unopposed or otherwise. I've got a lot of doors to knock on. In writing this, I looked back at what I wrote when I first ran two years ago. I'm proud to say that as your representative and we as a body, we've made progress on many of the issues that brought me here in the first place. Though some old problems remain, new challenges are on the way. I'm running again because, given my background as an urban planner, my belief in public service, and my experience on this council, this is how I can best be of service to our funky foothill town. In the past two years, I've worked here and with community partners to help make what's now the Aldi Building a better project. I've knocked on many, many doors to ask how to vote on important questions like new cell sites and alcohol sales. I've called the county and others to solve problems on your behalf, as I come across them and as they come to me. I'm helping this council work better by participating in the first significant update to its bylaws in nearly a decade. When the chance arose to help determine what we as a community will ask of La Vina too, I volunteered for that effort too, which continues apace. And when the committee updating Altadena's development standards presented its work, I reviewed and provided numerous comments to the county as someone who cares deeply about this town and the people who live here. I represented you in this year's Altadena Homeless Count, and I worked to help my neighbors in 4611 know what happens here, in this room, and what others in the community are up to. That last point is key, in a town that since I've lived here has lost its most important sources of news and information, requiring us to get the word out as best we can through all available means. The town council's stated role is to be your advocate and your forum. These are good people up here who give of themselves plenty more than these three hours a month. I believe this body continues to improve and evolve, but that it is only as effective as your participation and mine. This town council is also just one piece in Altadena's civic mosaic. From the library's community conversations, to Altadena Heritage's Triangle Park, to NBBA's candidate forums, our Chamber of Commerce and more, there's a lot going on, and we're here to support any and all efforts to make Altadena a better place to live as your neighbors and your advocates. In closing, this is how I believe I can best serve my community, by continuing to provide my time, energy, and talents to the Altadena Town Council. I humbly ask your support on Election Day.
Thank you, Justin. 4613 does have a candidate, she happens to be in Australia?
Yes.
She's in Australia right now, so I'm going to read Sylvia's statement.
Nope, no.
That was fast.
That was from the last one.
Thank you. Sylvia Vega is a 12-year resident of Altadena and has invested in the future of her community. The best contribution she can make to that future is to continue to be involved with the Altadena Town Council. She has been privileged to serve on the Altadena Town Council for four years and the Land Use Committee for four years. Her goals are to serve to maintain Altadena's beauty, help to fulfill its potential, and ensure the concerns of the Altadena residents are heard, and to help them feel connected to the town council. She has worked with residents in her census tract and kept them informed of actions taken by the Altadena Sheriff's Station and CUP to reduce crime in the area. Sylvia is a Realtor with Keller Williams Realty and is currently serving on the Agent Leadership Council for the fifth year. She thoroughly enjoys people and coming from a place of contribution. That's Sylvia Vega who is running unopposed. So, I'd like to say thank you to all of the candidates for your presentations.
Uh-oh.
Wait a second. Let me finish, may I finish my sentence?
Sure, sure.
Everyone will have another opportunity to meet the candidates and to speak with them at the candidate forum on June the 1st at 7:00 PM right here in the community center. The forum is being presented by NBBA and is moderated by the League of Women Voters. So, I hope everybody that we see here now will see here back on June the 1st. For those residents in census tracts without candidates, the council member in those tracts whose terms do not expire this year will be available at the forum to speak with the residents who may come from the census tracts that don't have candidates running. Okay, I think that's it for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a public comment on this, on this topic, the election, and I'm not sure if Monica still wants to say something.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Before, I extended an invitation again, and thank you, Pat, for mentioning the candidate forum. I just want to thank all of you for your service, those of you who are going off the council and not running for reelection, those of you who are running for reelection, and to those of you who still have another year on your term. This is such an important body to our community, and you've had a really impactful year, a lot of big issues that required an incredible amount of time, and we're grateful. I just wanted to share, for those candidates that are still here tonight, the format is going to be pretty much the same as it has been for the last two years. There will be a couple of brief opening questions that NBBA will pose to the candidates, and then the part that has been most effective, we will be breaking up by census tract so that you, in a particular census tract, can get up close and personal with the candidates and ask the questions. So, it's a great opportunity, even if you're running unopposed, to hear what the concerns are in your particular census tract. So, an invitation was sent out by email, we've heard back from four of the candidates, hope to hear back from all the rest of them soon, and again, thank you very much, all of you, for your service. Neighbors Building a Better Altadena is a grassroots group that got started about four years ago, just to bring forward issues and to try to help revitalize the community, the business community in particular, but we've kind of branched out into lots of other issues. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the Altadena Community Reports, and Mindy will not have a report, that will be the Altadena Public Library. The LA County Department of Parks and Rec, that will be Melissa Hernandez. Okay, not here. Moving on to the Chamber of Commerce, Councilmember Malone.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep this short in light of the, a full agenda this evening. I'm just gonna, just gonna mention only one thing, is that we're redoing the business directory that hasn't been printed in over 10 years or so, we're doing another print form and revitalizing that. And if you're a chamber member, you can actually take out an ad in there as well, full-color ad, all members will be directed. Will, it'll be in the directory anyway. We will open it up to a full directory to the whole community, but we're starting off with the members first, just to give us a head start.
Thank you. Collaborate Pasadena, Councilmember Sanzito.
Okay. The Collaborate Pasadena meeting was held April 26 at 6:00 PM at the Flint Ridge Retreat Center. We discussed and learned about recent work group activities. We received an update from the new director, Lisa Cavlier, regarding her first 100 days in office. We clarified policies around council membership, and a discussion took place regarding the results-based accountability and how to define the initiative's goals. Terry Tornick, Lisa Cavlier, and Gloria Sanzito worked on a draft to request funding from the County of Los Angeles to further support the Collaborate Pasadena's initiatives. The meeting at that point was over, and it was adjourned at 7:30, and I look forward to next month's meeting.
Thank you. Forty-first Assembly, Councilmember Matthews. Okay, they might.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Ann. Assemblymember Holden has announced changes to his district office staff. Palante Riddle, who previously served as a senior field representative, has been named district director. Former Executive Secretary Hector Rodriguez is now serving as field representative, and Assemblymember Holden also hired a new staff member, Karen Wine-Guard, as the office assistant. Assemblymember Holden also hired a new staff member, Karen Winegard, as the office assistant. That's it.
Thank you. Census Track Reports, forty-six oh three oh one.
So, me and Judy Matthews represent Northwest Altadena, and I had mentioned this during my candidate statement, but wanted to make clear. Last time I mentioned that there was a growing concern on Glen Rose concerning the speeding that was going on. I contacted Public Works, actually, I've been working on this for approximately two years now. I contacted Public Works, and Public Works continued to put out the speed radars on Glen Rose. The speed was registered at a, at 34.2, I think it was, and the other speed taken was approximately 33. It has to be 35 to actually recommend speed bumps, but the residents on Glen Rose and myself were not happy with that result. So, I did contact the supervisor's office and asked that something be done with respect to stopping the speeding on Glen Rose, and I just don't mean another sign or another indication of the miles per hour on the street, which I had put in as well. So, I haven't heard back yet, well, I take that back. Ms. Suzy Niemer did contact me and indicate that she was going to discuss this with Public Works. As I get further comment, further information on that, I will update the community.
The MAP, your neighbor, retraining has been confirmed for residents of upper and lower floor Cedar Farm area for October 7th and October 14th. That training will include all of our new residents, and I think this will be our second training, because we wanted to make sure the new residents have the opportunity to be trained as well. Special thanks to Councilmember Brent Musson, who led the interest within his census tract for the Second Annual Community Service Day on April 29th. Mr. Musson was very instrumental, and one of our residents that attends our meeting all the time, and she doesn't want her name mentioned, I will respect that, but she was one of, she, her house was, the minor repairs was done at her home, and we thank Brent and, and his efforts made. Did you have anything to say, Brent?
No, I just, I just want to invite our community to participate when we have an opportunity to, to do community projects, because it's an opportunity to bond, the, the volunteers bond, and the members of the community are able to see positivity happening on our streets. West Altadena is a place that can always use positivity. If you look at the, at the stats by the Sheriff's Department, you know, we have to do something to kind of counterbalance, and so I particularly encourage the members of 4610 to participate whenever we have the opportunity to do so.
Okay. Thank you. Forty-six oh three oh two.
Okay, I just have two, two areas that I want to address. First of all, in my census tract of forty-six oh three point oh two, I received several concerns regarding marijuana pot shop that had opened up in our area on the corner of Altadena Drive and Lincoln, and I just wanted to let residents know in my census tract that the supervisor's office has been notified, and that according to the senior field deputy, the Department of Regional Planning, the Sheriff's Department, and the DA's office are jointly working to, to address the issue. And then later on today, I received a, an email from one of the residents in the census tract that lived near that area, and she, she told me, she said, I just want to read it. She says, first of all, I want to thank you, you to those, what she's saying is, I want to give a thank you to those of you who were so quick to reach out to me about my concerns. A few days ago, the police let us know that the burglar was arrested who was breaking into the houses of, of my neighbors. Then, this morning, I drove by the pot shop and I saw it closed down. Chatted with the deputy sheriff, and he was very encouraging, and there was a clear way, he was very encouraging, and he told us that there was a clear way to shut down all future dispensaries in Altadena, moving towards, moving forward, giving our unincorporated land status in the county. And then she says, I was planning on going to the meeting tonight, but I'll skip it since this has been resolved. But I did want to say thank you for your work in partnership with the police to bring calm back to my neighborhood. I know my landlord still has concerns about the way the strip mall landlord allowed the pot shop there in the first place, so you may still hear something from her. And then she says, however, as far as I'm concerned, everyone moved swiftly over the past week, and I'm thrilled with the lasting changes and the impact for my neighborhood. And then she says, thanks, guys. So, that issue, and I just want to thank the Sheriff's Department and all those who were involved for moving so swiftly on it, you know, once people started bringing it to their attention. And then my next area is just an invitation. You're cordially invited to attend a fundraiser for the Elliott Magnet School on this Thursday and Friday. That's May the 18th and 19th at 6:30. It's a fundraiser. We're trying to establish a Club Aspires reading program at Elliott School. Many of you know that Elliott School was one of the, or is one of the focus schools, and we're trying to bring a reading program there to assist the, the students. So, you are cordially invited, and I hope to see you there on Thursday and Friday. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Census Track forty-six twelve, Councilmember Lee.
Do I need this? Okay. Okay, this is about Burbank Elementary School, which is on Allen. You all know that it's been closed since about 2011, and right now, there's a charter school leasing, but leasing short-term, and Pasadena Unified School District has a committee called 711. And that committee looks at all of the assets of Pasadena Unified School District and determines whether or not a building or furniture is considered surplus. And if it's surplus, then the Pasadena Unified School District can say, okay, this is surplus, and we can decide what to do. Well, very often, there are properties, and Burbank Elementary is one of those properties. And so, I've been going to these meetings, and they have two more public hearings. One is on May 24th at 6:30 at the Pasadena Unified School District Office on Hudson, next to one of the public schools. And the other one is on June 7th at 6:00 PM at the Burbank School. And then there's a third to finalize a recommendation. So, I've been going to these, and the last meeting was packed, which was really great. And from what I can determine, they don't really want to sell it, but selling it will be on as a list of potential things to do, although I think their priority is more to get a long-term lease tenant in there, and I believe that the charter school wants that long-term lease. So, at any rate, if you're interested in going and making your voices heard, which I think is important, those two meetings are coming up, and the third to finalize the recommendation, there aren't enough students to fill that school. If it's declared surplus, it first is offered to other public agencies, and then it goes up for public auction. And the information is at P U S D dot U S, and there's a 711 tab that you can click on and find, you know, the whole agenda and all the minutes from the past meetings. That's it.
Okay, thank you so much. We're moving on to public, general public comments. I do have two. Before I present that, I would like to remind the community that your library, the main library, Altadena Library will be celebrating 50th anniversary, that's on June 10th, and there will be events taking place that is hosted by your library, 50th year anniversary. Okay, I have.
You're both mine.
Okay, come on up. Mecha Cor.
This is about the film. I went to the Altadena Library today, because they're filming on Mariposa, and they had blocked all the handicap spots, because they had portable toilets there for the people that were working, and I can only park on the top on Mariposa, because I can't walk up all the stairs. I couldn't get into the library. And I don't understand why they couldn't have put those portable toilets somewhere else, because you couldn't, even where you drop off books on the outside, those bins, nobody could get to those either. So, I don't know how many days they're going to film there, but I, I think that before they're allowed to film, they need to take into consideration if they're going to block handicap spots, because there's not that many of them. So, I, since you were on that committee, I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Okay, can you speak to the mic, into the mic, please?
The other thing I have to say again, I brought it up once before, is yard sale signs. I don't understand why someone can't talk to our supervisor or whoever's in charge of the county. They're ugly. They stay up way past the time that the yard sale is. I know in Sierra Madre, there's a man that goes around, because I've been to sales up there, and at 4:30 every day, he says, if the, if the signs aren't down by the end of the yard sale, you get fined. I know you can't do anything about it, but I think it's something that the county should do. I mean, there's yard sale signs, and it's ugly, and we keep talking about our town, and I, I just think that's something that we need to address.
Do you have my phone number? Okay, it's on the website, I think. But, yeah, get in contact with me, and I'll help you with it.
Okay, thank you.
It's a code violation.
Yeah, thank you so much. We appreciate that notice. Okay, I think that should be it, and.
I have some public comments.
Okay, we didn't, I didn't have anything. Did you send it?
Your card is with Steve Lamb. I have two public comments, one general and one with you.
All right, we allow you to come make your general public comment, please.
Sorry, Michelle.
Sorry about that.
We were having trouble today with the.
Good evening. I wanted to personally thank, and on behalf of the community, thank the town council for their donation, generous donation to the, to the Triangle Park, and just to report that although fundraising is not my, a very favorite activity, but it has been very heartwarming because so many of the different groups and individuals have pitched in, and we're now at about $23,000. So, we're within, that's, that's if everyone who's pledged pays up. So, I was really happy to get your check, and I just wanted to say that it's coming along, and I think it's going to be a wonderful civic park and plaza. And also, I think it's really demonstrated to me how the different groups and institutions in Altadena, that we can get a lot more done if we work together. And, you know, because there's so much work to do, and this is such a do-it-yourself place, and I wanted to invite everyone to come to Altadena Heritage's annual Golden Poppy Party, which is this Sunday. And if you go onto altadinaheritage.org, you can see, see all the details. It's from 3:00 to 6:00. And every year, we drive every street in Altadena and look at all of the front yards, and we give four awards to gardens that beautify their neighborhoods and give to the street. So, I hope that, to see some of you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I know we don't respond to public comment, but I just have a question. When people are donating to your, to the park, is that, is that tax deductible?
Oh, it's 100% tax deductible. Because you're not getting anything in return other than a park. You're not like getting a meal or anything.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't like going to the county or something.
No, no, it's, and you should, and everyone who has given, I think, everyone's getting a, a letter with the tax-exempt information on it. Those are coming out from our partner, Amigos de los Rios, and I know that the first batch has already gone out, people who gave maybe in the first month or so, and I'm sure that you'll be getting a letter.
I just wanted to.
Councilmember Sanzico, one more minute.
I just wanted to know, when, when is the anticipated date of completion of the park?
Well, I, it should be done probably by the end of June. That's if, you know, we, we don't have quite enough money to finish it completely, but we're, the county is supposedly, we're going to be getting a little more money from them as well, but we can't even put in a board letter until the end of July. I guess that's when the end of the fiscal year is, or June 30th, right? So, but it's been prepared, and apparently, it will go through as soon as it can, but there was, they're not allowed to put any more board letters, which would give us a little, little extra to top off our Prop A money that we got in the first place. But because the community has responded so well, it's really, I think that's what the supervisor wanted to see, that there is real buy-in and real interest in making this. It's all part of this little movement to have a downtown in a civic area, in a town square, a town triangle in this case, and, you know, better commercial development so that we can all, you know, have places to go and to hang out, and nice public places.
That's great.
Councilmember Matthews.
Donation last day.
Mic, please.
Oh, oh, well, we're still accepting donations. We're not cutting, I, I'm personally getting very tired of fundraising, because it's taken up so much time, but we're still definitely accepting them, and if you go to amigosdelosrios.org, right on the welcome page on the top right, there is a, a little place that says, Give to Altadena Triangle Park. And so, you know, every, this is a real chance for us to all pitch in and to make it our park, and we definitely, we could still use a little bit more. I mean, we're going to spend as, as much as we have, and if we don't have enough, we're just going to have to cut back on a few things, and then hopefully, you know, in the next year, finish it. But I think we, we're going to be very close to getting most of the things that we hoped for, like all of the swale and the pathway and the signage. I think that has been pretty much, will be covered.
Councilmember Malone.
I just want to point out that.
Oh, and the chamber, thank you to the chamber also.
The chamber did approve it at the beginning of the month, but I'm not sure the treasurer has actually given him the check yet, so we need to make sure we get that.
Oh, great, yes. Thank you. I heard that the chamber had approved it, so thank you.
Do we go to, to you, to Heritage or?
Well, you, you can, you can, the checks, actually, the fiscal agent on this is Amigos de los Rios.
So, make sure the treasurer gets in contact with them.
Right. Or, but I've been, I've been gathering up checks. I wanted to say, like Montecito, connect, they collected from their residents, and they gave us $2,300 worth of checks, which is really impressive. They really want to be part of our community, and other groups have as well.
Okay, final comment from Councilmember Marcusson, and I'll let entertain a motion to adjourn.
Not about this, real quickly, because I talked to the county about it today. So, and part of your deal. So, I want to make sure that everybody knows, we put this on Nextdoor, we've, we've distributed flyers. The only days that anybody can have garage sales in Altadena, any more yard sales, is the last full weekend of the month, where there's a Saturday and Sunday in the, in the month, that, I mean, that Saturday and Sunday that's still in the month. You can have 12 of them a year at the last, on the last weekend of the month, the last full weekend of the month. You can have another two garage sales on other days, on other weekends, I should say, not during the week, with a, with a permit. It's free. It's just an authorization that you can go ahead and do it. The county is start, this has been in effect for quite some time now, and the county is going to start enforcing it. So, one of the things that we can do, and I'll give you the, the contact, is an email where if you, if, if you're, we're having a problem with it, there's one by, in my census tract that does it every weekend. That's not okay.
How do we even care about, how do we talk about the signs?
I know, but this, but the signs should, there should be fewer signs, because there are fewer garage sales. So, I just want to remind everybody, and yes, there will be more enforcement on this, because it's really gone sort of by the wayside. Okay, that's it.
There is a real estate agent in my census tract, I think it was Town Square or something like that, I forget what her name was, but she gives an annual yard sale for the community, and she gave it before the end of the week, so I did send her the information, but from what I understood, she went and, I guess, asked the county, and they made, let it, let her go ahead and do it.
Yeah, if she, if she, if she got permission. Yeah, if she got permission, yeah, then that was okay.
But I guess next year she'll have it at the right time.
Okay, I'd like to, thank you so much. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Brent Musson and seconded by.
I'm abstaining.
Okay. By Pat. Okay, now adjourned, 9:56. We did well.